And everybody's gonna be here except for Barry.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. If everybody could take a seat, we want to go ahead and get started tonight. I want to welcome you this evening to our December 7th, 2021 Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission meeting, and we're going to call this meeting to order. And Commissioner Stringfellow, would you open us in a word of prayer tonight?
Okay, thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this Planning Commission and the people that have come out to show their support for our city. And I just pray that you would just be with us and help us to make the right decisions that would impact our city and be of good for the city. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Stringfellow. Well, I'd like to note that everyone is present except for Mr. Hardwick, and so we have nine voting tonight, nine commissioners that are present. And so the first thing we have tonight, we have three public hearings this evening. The first one is a request by Glen Oak Investment LLC to amend the Glen Oak Commons Final Development Plan to add place of worship and daycare center, adult or child, to the list of permitted uses. The property is located at 102 Glen Oak Boulevard, on the south side of Glen Oak Boulevard, and on the west side of Old Shackle Island Road, as identified by Sumner County Tax Map, 159 A K 001.00. And the chair is noticing that there are no people signed up for that particular hearing, so we'll declare that hearing closed. The next hearing tonight will be a request by HTPC LLC to approve the Mayfair Phase Two Final Development Plan and add restaurant, quick service to the list of permitted uses. And the property is located at 250 East Main Street, west of Maple Drive, north, on the north side of East Main Street, as identified by Sumner County Tax Map, 159 J A 021.19. And the chair would note that we have three people signed up, so as I call your name, if you would, just come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and we will recognize you for your comments tonight. The first one is Jane Reynolds. Yes, please.
Haven't been in front of a microphone in a little while. In fact, last time I was in this room, we were rededicating the renovated or the replacement of a granite marker for Henry Bradford as the American Revolution Patriot that his land grant was, in fact, he served under Washington at the Battle of Brandywine. I could just go on all night, I'm a history lover. And, but first, I want to say I live at 142 Bluegrass Drive in Hendersonville. I am a retired teacher, principal, and director of HR for Sumner County Schools, and moved to this community in 1966. So though I grew up in East Tennessee and loved all the history there was up there, when I came here, I was blown away by the many historic buildings that were still here. Of course, in East Tennessee, most of them were log cabins, and most of them were framed, and it was such a significant thing to find numbers of beautiful places that were restored. Some of my first acquaintances and good friends were ladies that, if you're not from here, you may not know them, but you may know actually where they might have lived. Elizabeth Chenault, who was the owner of Ashcrest, which is the beautiful old yellow building up on 31E, house there. Calendar Lane was named for her family because that's her family alliance. Sarah Berry was here and active, along with Felice Farrell, who was, lived in the old Hancock, which what we know as the Hancock House, and we lost that not long ago, tragic loss. We also lost Winwood and Gallatin to a storm not long ago. Both of those are terrific losses to Tennessee and to history and our children because they were wonderful landmarks to visit. But those ladies really did carry the banner of historic preservation when I got here. If you know Craigfont, they were working on it when I came, and Hazel Path, Sarah Berry was still living there. But Sarah Berry also inherited the Berry property that we know as the Bradford Berry property. When she was born, her father bought the Berry property because the heirs were no longer living there. She never lived in it, but she did add a wing in the 60s and 70s to perhaps downsize from Hazel Path and live in there, adding a kitchen on the back and adding a den and double car garage, which is terrible disrepair, much worse than the house itself. All that to say, I'm delighted that in this approval or this package that's before you now, is that after some 20 years of standing and waiting for somebody to rescue her, the Bradford Berry original home is in this packet. It gets to stay on its foundation, which was of bone of contention for us historian people when we talked about moving it once upon a time. And so I very much support the saving of this and what good things may come from this part of the frontier, because that's what Hendersonville and Sumner County is. I like to think that Tennessee really was the 13th, one of the 13 colonies, because Tennessee was North Carolina when all that happened. A lot of things went on to change, change things around. But there's a lot to be said about saving our heritage, and I really hope that, once this is arranged and settled, that, and that's part of why I'm here, is that the community will rally, just like they did rally for us when we did restore. The obelisk was falling sideways and black and dark, the cemetery was totally gone. There were no really headstones, because that obelisk is not a headstone, it's just kind of like a family pillar. And there are families there that, 15, I think they say now, that we, I hope that we can do something very significant in Hendersonville about that site. And the one other thing that I would add is that through the process, and I'd like to give you, I've got some copies of things, if you want to read, there's some articles in here that had to do with our restoration that were in the paper. Thank you. A lot more is to be said about the Bradfords and the Berries and what went on there, but the, the effort was really also supported by DAR. It took us a year to get it cleared by them, but that is their purpose, their historic preservation. They really look and encourage us to look for patriots and make sure they're not lying somewhere in an unmarked grave. And there are a lot of other things, too, not just that, that this organization does. And I'm not representing them here tonight, but the, through the process, we ran across a lot of research that may be helpful later in working with this site. But I met lots of descendants, direct descendants of Henry Bradford. They came to this, they supported it, they're very interested in what's happening now, and they live all over. Some of them had made road trips just to come and see it recently, and many of them have shared that when they would come to family reunions as children and visit this place, that they were told that there is also a resting place on the property for indentured slaves, not indentured slaves, I'm sorry. The folks that worked for the family, and I'm not sure that it's true, but they wanted us to know that they think it's somewhere on the left side of the property, the left side of the original house. And in respect for that and for historical purposes, I did bring it up last night to the Historical Commission. And that's just one thing that I think that we all agree, that it'd be worthy time to follow that lead, see if it's true, and try to locate it. And that may affect or may not affect your, your lines drawn, I don't know, I have no idea. But thank you again for considering it, and I hope this all comes together.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Very informative. The next is Jason Shepard. If you would, just introduce yourself and...
I think we were directed to sign up on the wrong, we're, I'm here to speak on behalf of the 102 Glen Oak property.
Okay, that hearing's been closed, but I'll tell you what, since you're there, I'm going to go ahead and let you do it, you're the only one that signed up, I think.
I'll switch him over.
Okay.
There's also Wanda Mullins. Wanda, did you sign up for the Mayfair one? Glen Oak, okay, so we're going to change both of you to the Glen Oaks, okay?
Okay, our apologies for that.
No problem, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm Jason Shepard and longtime resident of Sumner County, but also I'm a business owner at 102 Glen Oak. I run a sports card and memorabilia shop there. I've also got to know several of our neighbors, great people. So we just want to speak in support of changing whatever needs to be changed in order to allow house of worship. I know Hendersonville is a place that not only values worship, values faith, but this is a church that needs no introduction. This is not just allowing another church to occupy that space. If you look, CrossPoint's track record speaks for itself in the greater Nashville. I think this is what the sixth campus, it's not even about just a house of worship on Sunday. Millions of dollars have gone back into the community as a result of CrossPoint, as well as facilities such as the Dream Center and other places that have facilitated life change on multiple levels, not just faith, but also physical, emotional, and otherwise. And so as a guy who occupies that space daily, I have no issues with some of the things that do come up, foot traffic and those sorts of demographics would have no bearing on, on my support. So I'll keep it brief, but I know as far as I'm concerned, and several others that I've talked to in that complex, we would have no problem with a house of worship occupying that, especially CrossPoint.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mullins? And for the commissioners, what I've done is just reopen this hearing for, for the Glen Oak property, glad to hear this.
And I would say, if you haven't been to...
Are you much on your mic?
Yeah. If you haven't been to his store, it's very interesting. I actually went in there a couple of weeks ago. It's worth a visit, there's a lot of really interesting things in there, so.
Okay. Ms. Mullins?
Thank you very much, thank you for hearing, hearing us tonight. Yes, my name is Wanda Mullins, and I'm not a small business owner, and I haven't lived here very long, but I am, we moved, my husband and I moved up here three years ago, and we found CrossPoint and absolutely fell in love with it. So we went to the Nashville campus, and then we, they said, oh, by the way, we're going to start, can you hear me? We're going to start a campus in Hendersonville, and Chuck and I looked at each other and were like, we are so down for that because we love it. And so we started in Knox Sauce Middle School, then we went to a couple other places, and now we're at the movie theater, and I can't tell you how amazing it would be if we could get into a brick and mortar place. And so I started serving, my husband also serves, and we absolutely love it. I mean, this name tag right here, yes, I'm on info, and I do guest experience, and I, and I love greeting people and everything. Just imagine the change in our community that would occur from people loving on people and the community that would just, you know, be so great for this area and if we had our own space. Actually, we have invested into Westington House Apartments and have gone, and we have delivered like some Thanksgiving baskets to residents, and we did like a Serve the City little thing for the youth and the teens and the, and the young kids, and just got involved in their lives. And so I'm just imagining what it would be like if we could have a brick and mortar and a place to be, to draw other people in and, and serve the city. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you, very good. Okay, that, that sums up all the Mayfair comments as well, we only had one, of course, Glen Oak, we had two. So I'm going to declare the Mayfair hearing closed at this point. And then the last hearing tonight, looks like we have four, or five speakers. It's a request by Glen F. Neighbors and Glen F. Neighbors Jr. to rezone 5.34 acres from a state residential ER to general commercial plan development GCPD, and to approve a preliminary development plan called twice daily at Center Point to govern the property. This request also includes an amendment to the general framework map of the Hendersonville Land Use and Transportation Plan to change character area designation of the property from suburban living to suburban center. And the property is located at 1003 Center Point Road, on the west side of Center Point Road, and on the north and south sides of Caldwell Drive, as identified by Sumner County Tax Map, 160 Parcel 003.00. We have five speakers, and so Sharon Lyle, if you'll come, please.
I'd like to thank you for hearing us tonight.
If you would, just pull the mic down to you, there you go, thank you.
My name is Sharon Lyle, my husband Mike, and I have lived at the property located at 112 Caldwell Drive for 30 years. To put this in perspective, with the property that you're looking at to rezone tonight, there's the corner, then the creek, then what used to be two vacant lots that are completely in the flood zone, and then our house, so we're the first house as you go up the street. It's been 15 years since our neighborhood's been called out for a rezoning proposal such as this, and my questions have not changed. When you start developing close to and within a flood-prone property, what happens with the flooding? I mean, what safeguards are taken to ensure that the properties located alongside those developments do not get adversely impacted by that? The second question is, how much more traffic can our neighborhoods sustain and feel like we're living in a suburban area rather than an urban area? And the third question is, where would it end? What's the long-term plan for this neighborhood? Most of the vacant land either has floodplain running through the middle of it, or along the side of it, or it's completely contained within the flood zone. So with several vacant tracts of land available out there, if this one were to be zoned commercial, what's to prevent all those other property owners to come forward with some kind of development plan as well? So where would that commercial development end? And those are questions that are not going to be easily answered tonight, or really anytime. To give you a little history, in 1975, there was major flooding in our neighborhood. The Nashville area had a record amount of rainfall in a short period of time. The houses that were along the creek side of Linden Drive all went underwater, but the houses on the other side of the street were not affected. My property was not affected, the corner was, but at the time, it started at Center Point Road and just gently sloped down to the creek. Okay, since then, there's been major fill, mostly rock, that was taken from the excavation where they built the off-ramp coming southbound on the bypass. So where that excavation was going on to build that off-ramp, it was taken and put on this corner lot, and now it's just essentially a bluff down to the creek. In 2010, there again was a slightly more record rainfall in a short amount of time, and with the fill that's gone into the old drive-in property, and there's a lot of fill continuing behind Tractor Supply where the old halfway house used to be, the fill that went into the corner on the property that's up for rezoning tonight, the houses on the creek side of Linden Drive went completely under, the houses on the upper side were up to the door frames at least, and my house was knee-deep. So what changed? I mean, the, you know, a couple of inches more rain would not produce flooding on that scale unless some filling had been done within the floodplain without that compensating amount being removed to prevent that from happening. We have not seen any, any dirt, soil, rock, anything being removed to compensate for the fill that's going in. When you, if you've been anywhere near the intersection of Center Point and Caldwell, between 5:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., navigating that intersection is already a challenge. It's dangerous, is what it is. And when that one commercial lot that was grandfathered in 40 years ago, that has so many big utility easements on it that it can't be permanently developed, but it does make a nice fireworks stand and a pumpkin patch, and when that's actually in use, people coming and trying to turn in and out, it's, it's awful. I don't know, I don't know how to describe that, you need to just come drive through that neighborhood. And this year, JP2 added middle school grades as well as their high school grades, and so they've also put another load of traffic onto us. And over the last 30 years since we've lived there, we, you know, this neighborhood has graciously accepted the development that's gone on. We've had, on the Good Looksville End, we've had Indian Hills, we've had 12 Stones, we've got Mansker Farms, we've got Mont Haven Green, we've got Hickory Point Apartments behind us, JP2, now JP2 Middle School. I mean, it's, you know, we have not fought any of that, but it has added a tremendous amount of traffic. As to the plan of the fuel center itself, we look at the, the impact of what a concrete or a paved parking lot would do to runoff, where that, at least now, as it stands, it can absorb some of the rainfall, but when you put an impenetrable surface on there, is that runoff with the petroleum products going to impact the creek? You know, Center Point branch of Mansker Creek is already impaired, and I don't know what the EPA would say about that. I know Mansker Creek, as far as I know, is an active creek, but it all feeds into the Cumberland River and underground storage tanks for fuel. There again, you're going to be excavating, putting something in, does it pose a potential threat to the water runoff, not to mention the flash floods every spring that come and go and come and go? I think it impacts the flora and fauna that depend on that clean water to survive in that area as well. I mean, this creek goes all the way back towards Long Hallipike, all the way to the Cumberland River. I've also not seen any essential services being proposed here that we can't find within walking distance. I mean, we have Dodge Store, we have MapCo going down Center Point, there's the Mystic Little Fuel Center. I don't know that the need for an additional fuel station is great enough in this neighborhood to warrant rezoning a single piece of property in a residential area.
Okay.
Also, would, would the sale of alcohol be allowed with the church across the street, a church to the right, a church to the left, and a school in the backside? So, you know, it's looking like 24 hours, seven days a week, we would have commercial activity, noise, lights, fumes disrupting a residential neighborhood. And with the questions about flooding and traffic congestion, the future commercial developments, I'm just going to respectfully ask that you vote no on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Martha Butler?
Thank you for listening to us tonight, all of us. I've been on Caldwell longer than 30 years, and I've watched a lot of things take place, but the big thing is the traffic. I literally cannot get out of my driveway at certain periods of time, I live on the curve, and it's a very dangerous area to come around. So it's very hard to even get out of my driveway to go anywhere during the morning hours and the afternoon hours. So that is a very big concern that I have for that. The other thing is, is that I feel like that we're, the community is being taken away from us. The more and more traffic that we have is the less and less access we have to be able to get out and do anything in the community, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And if we add another traffic light that I understand may be coming on Vietnam, off of Vietnam, you're really talking about backing up traffic. When John Paul dismisses, I cannot get out of the driveway. The only thing I can do is just wait in a couple of hours and they'll be gone. That's the only thing, if there was an emergency, I would just have to get to the end of the driveway and pray somebody let me out of my own driveway. So the traffic is horrific at certain periods of time, and the more that you have people coming in and moving out of this area, you take away the neighborhood and you make it a commercial area. And we've been there so long that it has been a neighborhood, and we don't want to lose that, so please consider that when you're making these decisions, that these are people living here and have lived there for long periods of time, and would like to maintain their own neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Centle, Centle, maybe?
Thank you. I'm Steve Centle, my wife Martha is here with me today. We live at 104 Linden Drive, we've been in Hendersonville for almost 35 years, we've lived on that property for the whole time. The concern I have is the traffic, and I can't add too much more than what's already been said today, but my biggest concern is that to be able to enter and exit that convenience store or gas station, major modifications would have to be made to the Linden Drive and Caldwell Road. It'd just about be impossible to go, come and go from that, that convenience store. Also, speaking about the traffic with the school, as Sharon mentioned earlier, they added the Junior High School, which increased the traffic. One problem that we saw early on was that Pope John Paul decided to make the entrance to their facility on Linden Drive. I don't know if you've been down that way during the school, when school was in session, when traffic was coming in, but that was a disaster. Traffic was backed up on Center Point for several miles, and the school was forced to move it back to the original entrance, and that was just a block away. So the biggest concern I have right now is the traffic in the area without the redesign of that intersection, and I think that we should deny that rezoning for that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doug Willis?
Yes, my name is Doug Willis. I have lived on Chaparral Drive at the top of the hill 46 years, probably older than a number of the people on this committee, so I've been there a long time. a number of the people on this committee, so I've been there a long time. And it seems like I've done this half of my life. This shouldn't have been going on, but it's been going on way longer than it should have, and some of the other people have explained things. I'm going to try to do something that I don't normally do and use notes. Normally, I don't do that, but I'm not sure what my time limit is. It used to be five minutes, and then you could bring people with you. They could give you their time slot. We've had that before, too. So if that needs to be done, I've got some that said they'd give it to me. But anyway, I'm pointing out first that the land up there, I don't know if you were familiar with it, but when I moved up there, my wife and I moved up there in 1977, and if you're familiar with 12 Stones Golf Course where Mansker Creek comes in, there was two piles of rocks up there, one on the Hendersonville side, one on the Goodlandsville side. That was called Sumner County. It was not a part of either community. And we were actually approached by both city commissioners from both of the places, and they asked us if we would be willing to come into their city. And the person that, I don't know if some of you all are old enough to know him or not, but some of you all may remember Albert Jones. I don't know if that rings a bell or not, but at that time, he was the codes commissioner from Hendersonville, and he was sent by the city of Hendersonville to represent them and tell us what all that they would do for us if we became a part of their community. And I'm telling you right here, there's three things that he promised us. Number one, there would be no commercial endeavors in the neighborhood whatsoever at all. Second thing he promised us was that there would be no multiple residence houses, in other words, apartments. And that has since sort of slipped in the cracks. The third thing he promised us, now this wasn't a promise, it was sort of, we will work with you to try to get this to happen. We were all on septic tanks out there, and that is actually White House Utility District, and they said they would work with White House Utility to try to get the sewer line run up to us so we could be on city sewers. Well, unfortunately, that happened partially, but when Pope John Paul School came there, which is after all of this happened, they ran the sewer line up to Pope John Paul. End of story. It never got up to us, so we're still on septic tanks, but that wasn't a promise. The first two was. And then, we've mentioned, the traffic is terrible right there, and I would be more than willing to have any of you that want to come with me, if you want to take your life in your hands, I'll let you get in the car with me, or I'll get in there with you and let you see what it's like to dodge bullets. People drive like idiots through there. That's a 30 mile an hour speed limit, and they're topping that hill. If you remember, the Dukes of Hazzard, they're almost on two wheels coming across the top of that hill. And I mean, you're literally taking your lives in your own hand. There's a stop sign there. You don't stop. If it's clear, you just go while you can. And the more traffic we have down there, the worse it's going to get, and as Sharon said, we've had all of these housing developments come in back there. There's Indian Hills that we've had, and then there's Mansker Farms and all of that, and probably, and there's still more room for more building over there, so it's only going to get worse. And the last thing we need is something down there at that particular intersection to disrupt it even more. And there have been, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but everybody knows there's been numerous accidents down there, people injured severely, several of them, and we have actually had a couple of deaths of people that before they got there went off the hill up there by where I live. There isn't any shoulder. You just drop about 15 feet into somebody's yard or into a ditch, and there's been a couple of people killed that ran off the hill going into the golf course, and there's been several people killed coming down the hill going toward Center Point Road that way where the car turned completely over. So it's a super dangerous area and is getting worse all the time. And, you know, that we wanted to emphasize for sure because traffic is terrible. We don't need any more problems. Second thing I want to point out is, and Sharon mentioned that too, that is a designated floodplain down there. We had an idea it was, and for years, Millard Bridges owned the property back behind us, and that's his, he died, and his son sold that off, and that's now, I think there's about 11 or 12 homes, they're single dwelling homes back there. But the kids on our street that were in grade school or in high school used to come to my house in the morning when all of that was flooded, because we'd get flooded, actually marooned. The flood would come in on the side across from the golf course, and then it would come in down where we're talking about right across where Pope John Paul School is. We were actually marooned on island, so the kids would come to my house. I would walk them up through my wooded acres that I have behind my home, and Millard Bridges would meet me up there, and we'd get the kids over the fence, and he'd take them in his truck over to Center Point Road so the kids could get on to Center Point Road and go to the school from there. And that's happened numerous times. And I actually, I pointed out here, I went to, actually over to the Corps of Engineers on Rockland Road, and I sit down and talk with some of the engineers over there, and they didn't have a current map, but we had a map that they had, and they use their protractors and rulers and everything else, and they said, well, not only is this area in a floodplain, but they said that floodplain actually goes back about 100 to 125 yards further back in there than the property they're talking about selling right here. So it runs way back there, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that anything, houses or anything else, is supposed to be legally built in a floodplain. Am I correct on that?
We'll address that a little later, so.
Okay, well, I was under the impression it was, but anyway, that was in a floodplain. If anybody wants to go over and check at Corps of Engineers, you can do that. They're glad to help. And so that was an issue, and of course, one thing that Sharon mentioned, too, they came in after one of these last ones, and I call it a dam. They just built literally a dam, a rock wall up there, and I don't know if it's got any concrete in there or rebar or anything else. I think they just put rocks in there and filled it in with landfill, and you get more water in there, that's going to erode. In addition, right now, it's pushing water back up to her house and making it bad for them, but that's going to erode, and what happens if that erodes and that whole thing collapses? Big problem. And I'm not saying it will happen, but it's very potential that it could happen. And so that is an issue. And the last thing, like I say, I don't usually speak from notes, but I'm just trying to rehash some of the things I think are important, and the last one I think is really important. And this, all of this first started happening approximately 35 or 36 years ago before we were ever annexed into the city. So it goes back a long time, maybe some older than some of you all are still. But the first time it came up, I don't know if any of you all happen to know a fellow who's really a super nice guy, Dr. Carmack, Jim Carmack, who was an alderman at that time. And if I'm not mistaken, he was an alderman for like three terms and was re-elected every time, and then he retired and wanted to develop or spend more time at his medical practice. And I sat down and talked with him, and he said, Doug, he said, what they're doing to you all is totally wrong. He said, we sent out a representative, Albert Jones, from here, and what he told you should stand. He said, this is why people don't trust government, because they look at you and tell you one thing, and then they do exactly the opposite of what they tell you. And he said, I do not agree with that. And he said, I'm going to let everybody on that Board of Aldermen and the mayor know that this is wrong. And so he did.
Mr. Willis?
We had all, we had a number of people speaking on that.
Mr. Willis, I don't want to interrupt you. You're doing, I'm right here.
Oh.
I'm really enjoying this, this history lesson and all, and I would think if you could wrap it up.
I am. If you give me a chance, I'll wrap it up in two minutes.
Thank you.
I'm at the, at end.
Awesome.
But at that meeting, after everybody was done, he was the first one to spoke, and he said, these people have been done wrong. He said, I hope everybody, every one of the aldermen here and the mayor vote against this and make it permanent. And that was it. That's what happened. End of story. I told you it ended up, but that's where it ended up. But we've gone through this numerous times, and we have fortunately come out ahead every time, but we shouldn't have had to keep doing this for going on to now probably 35 years. It's, this should be the end, period.
Thank you, Mr. Willis.
If anybody's got any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Thank you so much for your comments. Vicki Fuquay?
I'm Vicki Fuquay. My husband and I have lived at 114 Caldwell Drive for about 15 years now, and one of the reasons that I would hope that you guys would vote against the rezoning is because of the traffic is the biggest thing. We live right across from JP2. They have a traffic cop up there now when school lets out and when it's going in. Otherwise, I couldn't get out of my driveway in the mornings at all. There's also a school down Center Point, Restoring Hope, is right down there at the church down there. So there's two school zones in that area where JP2 definitely has the most traffic, and that affects us the most, but you can't get out once you get on there with all the traffic coming from Restoring Hope. You're just really just sitting there. So the school hours, the traffic with the schools is a problem. Also, there's a lot of teen drivers there, and as everybody else has said, people come over that hill flying. They don't, we've had our mailbox knocked down, I don't know how many times, and we've had people wreck and end up in our yard because they come over the hill too fast. We've had, I guess it was a teenage girl probably went to JP2 that hit our mailbox. They, a lot of them are just learning to drive. They don't, they are not equipped to handle all that traffic. So there's a lot of little fender benders, mailbox bumps and stuff like that that goes on there with just the traffic that they have now. The other thing is, you know, on the Sundays, when church is going on, you've got all that traffic coming out, which would, one of the churches would be directly across from where this place would be, which is going to cause a problem, too. I just found out about this today, so I made a lot of notes to try to make sure I covered things. And of course, the flood zone, that's a concern of ours, too, but I think everything's been said, that needs to be said about the flood zone. We bought in a residential area, thinking it would always be a residential area. And as other people have said, when they do their little Halloween thing and they sell their fireworks down there, it's terrible. You've got cars everywhere down there trying to get in and out, and that's only a seasonal thing. I can't imagine having that on the other side, too, that's going to be continuous. It's just, it's making a not-great-safe situation into a really not-great-safe situation. I think that's all I have on mine. The other concern I did have, too, was if this place is going to be selling alcohol, there's schools, the schools there, the church across the street, the two churches down Center Point, one on each side of it. I'm not sure how much of a problem that would be because we've never really lived in an area where we had to worry about that, but it doesn't sound like a good thing to me. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Fuquay. Okay, that's the last speaker for that hearing. I'm going to declare that one closed. So let's go on with the agenda tonight. We're on item number four, requests for information assistance. Are there any commissioners? Hearing none. Additions to the agenda? There are none. We have the minutes from November 2, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Silkwood?
Second.
Second by Mr. Altizer. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay, thank you very much. Move on now to item number six, excuse me, item number seven, and it's going to be the development plans. Glen Oaks Commons will be the first one, and Director Free, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a request from Crosspoint Church. They're requesting that the following uses be added to parcel one of Glen Oak Commons' final development plan. That would be place of worship would be one use, and daycare center, adult or child, would be the other. If you can see the map that's up on the screen, the area there that's in magenta or pink, that's the area at which the church would be operating, and that is where they're requesting that specific use of a daycare and a church just within that area. And we might have representatives of the church here this evening or from the development, developer of that. Also, one thing I might mention is, up there to the right is actually the, I think, Mexican restaurant, and it has alcohol sales, and we do have with proximity of churches to alcohol sales. It's limited to where it has to be, no closer than within 150 feet of the corner of a building where a church would be located and the corner of where alcohol sales would be taking place. In this specific case, the Mexican restaurant is already there, and we have clarification from that from our finance director, that basically a church can choose to locate near a place that sells alcohol, but if the church is there, then the restaurant that serves alcohol could not locate closer. This area here that's in green around the church location, we had them do kind of 150-foot around through there. So just for future use, if we ever had any other alcohol sales that wanted to occur within that and the church was still there, we wouldn't be able to approve those uses, just to make you aware. But everything's pretty much in the packet. I can answer any questions, and like I said, there's probably a representative here from the applicant.
Do we have somebody here from Crosspoint? Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Will Tyner, and I have the privilege to serve at Crosspoint. An honor to represent them tonight on this. We are super excited about this opportunity. We currently have a piece of the Glen Oaks Commons Shopping Center under contract to purchase, and are just requesting this use approval, limited to the portion of the building, which was the former Food Lion Grocery Store, and just are really excited about the opportunity. Crosspoint launched the Hendersonville campus at the beginning of 2020 and Knox-Doss, and launched the campus as the beginning of the pandemic came on, but the campus has continued to thrive. It's meeting at the movie theater right now, and are just really thrilled to find a permanent home, to plant our flag in this community, continue to serve and love this community. So we're really excited about that. We're also super excited about this location and just to have the opportunity to breathe a little bit of new life into an older center that's been vacant for a while. So we just humbly kindly request your approval.
I think the only question I would have is if this is approved, what's your timeline in kind of moving forward? What's the game plan in terms of retrofit and all that kind of stuff?
We plan to move ahead as soon as possible.
Okay. All right, very good, very good. Any questions by commissioners? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve with all staff comments?
Motion to approve with all staff comments.
Is Silkwood approved, second by Ms. Stringfellow? Any questions? Any more questions? Okay, Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hardwick? Oh, I'm sorry. Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson? Stringfellow?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
You're approved. Director Free.
Yeah, one thing, one thing I just may note is, most, most communities our size or of any size, as older commercial areas where you have bigger, big box kind of square footage, in most of those areas, they typically downgrade and there isn't, there's really a struggle to find of use for, for such properties. Here, especially over the last five to six years, all of the big box kind of square footage has found, has found new uses to where that we don't have a lot of vacant large, large square footage of some of the older type commercial property. So that's something, just a note for the commissioners and for the public, that's something that's very, it's a very good gauge of the health of our community that, that we have uses ready to go into commercial buildings that have kind of run their, run their course. So that's, that's a very positive thing. And it's very rare that it happens to the level that it happens here.
Thank you, Director Free. Next one we're going to move to is Mayfair Phase Two, and that's FDP and FDP ad use, Restaurant Quick Service. And Timothy and Grant, who's, which one are you guys going to?
Timothy.
I'll take that. Yeah. So Mayfair Plan Development is a, it's an existing plan development that dates back to 2004. It's located on the east side of, on East Main Street between the Aladdin Temprite Plant and, and City Hall. It's a general commercial plan development. So there, there's a, of course, a preliminary development plan that covers the development. There's also an FDP which covers the Office Depot and the NTB, kind of in the, in the dogleg of, of the development. But one component of the approved preliminary development plan that you see there on the screen was that the Bradford Berry House was to be relocated to an outlot fronting on Main Street, there at the bottom right, where the existing cemetery would be behind it. Now, the trigger on that happening was to be the development of the, the big box parcel in Phase Two. At the time, that was going to, that was thought to have been the Super Walmart, but that ended up going to Indian Lake Boulevard. And it was at that same time that the Historic Zoning Commission was established and the Historic Zoning District was overlaid on the property. So then Phase, Phase One of Mayfair developed, that's for the Office Depot, NTBR. And fast forward to today, the developer has some potential users, is wanting to add quick service restaurant to the list of allowed uses for Phase Two. And we can figure the layout of some of the internal street system. They are also proposing to leave the Bradford Berry House where it sits and also allocate up to $100,000 for the stabilization of the roof in provision of fencing around the cemetery. I'll come back to that $100,000 in a minute. The overall layout is pretty similar to the PDP. The main difference being that they're shifting the Spine Street from the west side of the property to the east, which opens up the possibility of a future connection to Springhouse Court, and also splitting up the big box site there at the back into two smaller sites. As I mentioned before, this development does have a historic zoning overlay, so the applicant went before the Historic Zoning Commission last night. The commission voted unanimously to approve a certificate of appropriateness, and it also recommended that the west property line of parcel F, which is the Bradford Berry House lot, be shifted to the west so that it is 30 feet off of the front corner of the Bradford Berry House. The intent being to get a little more separation between the Bradford Berry House and the parcel E building. And the applicant can, can speak to their, their response to that. Going back to the proposed $100,000, staff asked for, for a clarified statement on what they're offering. They emailed that, that statement this afternoon, and that's what I handed to the commissioners just before the meeting started. I'll, I'll read that briefly. Regarding the proposed Mayfair Phase Two Final Development Plan, upon full and final non-appiable approval from all government agencies having jurisdiction or authority over the Mayfair, over the Mayfair Phase Two Final Development Plan, recording of the final plat and the closing of the development loan, Old Acre McDonald will contribute $100,000 to the city of Hendersonville to be used towards restoration of the Bradford Berry House and direction of a metal fence around the adjacent cemetery. Additionally, Old Acre McDonald shall provide sewer and electrical stub outs at the new property line of the Bradford Berry House. A couple of other, one other thing I'll point out on this is, on the approved PDP, the outlot west of the future Bradford Berry House location was further limited in the, the allowed uses beyond even the use limitations imposed on the overall plan development. So on this new plan, those same restrictions have been lifted from that lot and put on parcel F, which is, which is the one west of the current Bradford Berry House location. So that, that parcel does have the same limitations placed on it that the old PDP would have, would have placed on it. And they have agreed to all staff comments, except I think they want to discuss fire department comment number three.
Okay, is there a representative here that would say you want to discuss fire department comment number three? Which reads, truck template provided for parcel A, B, and C does not meet the minimum requirements to navigate it safely. So that's what we're talking about here. So would you kind of explain what your discussion item would be on that?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Jeff Kundif with Barge Design Solutions here, representing Old Acre McDonald. We did have a discussion with the fire department, and they have been satisfied with our response, and we are adequately providing the...
Okay, Mr. Knowles back there.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. You're okay with that? All right, thank you so much. All right, so that goes away. And so are there any questions for Mr. Witten or for the developer on this, this plan and the ad use? Ms. Silkwood.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess this question is for Mr. Witten. So last night at the Historic Zoning Commission, can you talk through a little bit in more detail about the 30-foot shift that they were recommending as far as the property line, I'm supposing, goes? Do you have a better picture for, other than what's on the screen? I'm just having a little trouble seeing that.
Yes. And Jeff Kundif is, can speak to that, but I did print off. You've got copies? Okay. So he'll, he'll hand out a diagram that kind of show the, the 30-foot, that the requested 30-foot property line relocation. So the lot you want to look for is, at the top, parcel E, the 0.9 acres, which is, which is west of the Bradford Berry House. So in between those two buildings, you can see the dimension 30 feet. And this, this plan represents their, they just redesigned this today to comply with the commission's recommendation. So that dimension starts at the front corner of the Bradford Berry House, which is actually the porch, the outside corner of the porch. And they have shifted that property line to provide 30 feet from that porch, the property line, and then dog legs back behind the Bradford Berry House, still 30 feet off of that. And then, so on the parcel E, you also have a 10-foot building setback. So the closest that parcel E building could be to the Bradford Berry House would be 40 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Witten. And along those same lines, one, someone who spoke tonight mentioned a servant cemetery. Where would that be located on this map? Or do we know that there is, that that truly for sure exists? And where would it be if it did?
I don't know the location of that potential cemetery. I have not, is the first I've heard of that.
Well, I'm sure that they're going to take that into...
Mrs. Reynolds could address that very well.
She, she mentioned that. Ms. Reynolds, did, do you know where that cemetery is located?
I just know that several of the descendants said that they were told that...
Okay, so there's, yeah.
No, it's, they are not. They didn't know, but they've been heard it for generations.
Okay, so we would just need to do some checking into that, for sure.
One other thing I'll point out about the handout you were just giving on the right-hand side of the page, you'll probably notice that the road alignment around the cemetery is a little bit different than what was shown in your plans. So the applicant got notification that they would need more of a buffer around that cemetery. So in order to accommodate that, they, they're proposing to reroute that, that street a little bit around the cemetery. So that, and that's something we can work on. If this is approved, we can continue to refine that as it, as it gets to the site plan stage.
Okay. Mr. Altizer?
Timothy, I got a question. If you go further into the plan and you start looking at the, the east side roadway as it goes back and it starts approaching the Aladdin property, and you've got the access roads that are going into the Aladdin property through their parking lot, are they intending to make those accesses available?
Yes, so you're talking about the bulk of the property that runs to the north, to the northwest there.
Right.
Yes, they are providing connections to that property at, at the, at the north end, and then I think midway, kind of halfway down. So if, if that property does develop, those connections will be...
Right there is one.
Yeah, so there's a potential connection there, and then I believe...
Keep going to the middle, that one right there. When you say potential connections, they are connections now. Are they going to stay connections until it's developed?
Yes, so, so when that, when that adjacent property develops, then we would be looking for that property to, to make use of those access points and, and also provide reciprocal access easements across the property.
Understanding those access easements have to be capable of handling truck traffic?
Um...
Because that's going right through the middle of the parking lots.
I believe the one at the north there would need to, because on the preliminary development plan, that is a, that's a, that goes all the way through to Maple Drive North.
Okay.
So I believe that would, the one down here, I don't know about that one.
Okay, because you've got truck traffic on both of those right now.
So are these things that we could flesh out, site plan?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Altizer, is that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, any more questions? Mr. Hasty?
Yes. I think the state has an archaeologist that does...
Okay.
Site burial grave evaluations. And if there is that potential, I would hope that the developer would commit to get the state archaeologist out and look and evaluate, just to make sure. And if they are, it'd save you a whole lot of money on the front end if you knew it. They're going to donate that property. All we can do is recommend to the board...
Right.
...that they accept that donation. And I, and I think it's a good idea. I'd love to see the Bradford Berry House restored. You know, I've been in Hendersonville about as long as Mr. Willis has back here. And I've seen it deteriorate, which is bad. The original developer, or the developer had originally indicated that he would move it to a lot down on Main Street. I think that's a good offer. But it's going to cost you a whole lot more than $100,000 to do that. I think you're getting off cheap. It ought to be closer to $250,000 for the restoration of that site. Now, it's going to cost a small fortune to maintain that. And the city is going to wind up having to accept the responsibility of the restoration and the maintenance. Did you ever have an idea of what it was going to cost you to relocate the, the structure?
No, I don't, I don't have an answer to that question.
How'd you come up with $100,000?
That's just for the roof.
It's just a lot of money. It's a lot of money.
Hey, I'm seeing a whole lot of development sites going in here that's going to generate a whole lot of revenue for somebody. I mean, I, I think this should go. Now, these parcels, they're all fee simple. There's not going to be a commercial association with those, or is there?
Yeah, if you, if you would just come up to the microphone, if you're going to speak, let's go on and get it on record.
Yeah.
I think it'd be very important, as Mr. Hasty can hear and we can hear, so...
I'm sorry, I don't speak very loud. My name's David Young.
Okay.
I'm with Old Acre McDonald. We're the developers of the site. We worked the developers when Mr. May wanted to move the house, so I don't have a lot of information, I don't have any information on that, other than I see it on the plan. But as the Historical Commission pointed out to us last night, moving the house, then it's no longer historical. You can't, you can't relocate it. It loses, it's historical value. And, you know, it, it's just not good for the property to, to, to try to move that house. It would destroy it. So that's, that's why we, you know, it's much better to stay where it is. And we give up an acre and a half of land between it and the house, which...
I'd say that probably, well, but you were going to donate some to put it on, though, so that, that kind of offsets.
Yeah.
My other question was, is there going to be an association? Or is you, as developer, going to be maintaining the landscape and parcels around all these buildings and the irrigations and all this, that and the other? Or will that be done by individual?
It'll be done by the individual owners of the properties.
You won't be involved with it once you're out and gone?
No, sir, we won't.
Okay.
Okay.
If there's going to be an association, I was going to ask you to make sure you maintain the Berry House and the cemetery.
I never suspected that.
Right.
All right, so Mr. Hasty, I'm, I'm slipping off to the sidetrack here. So when y'all said Mr. Hardwick wasn't here tonight, I said, Hardwick? Is that Barry Hardwick? Well, Barry's daddy and my mother were brother and sisters. I've been to Barry's house, I have no idea he was on the commission up here. I'm an old West Nashville boy, and he was an East Nashville boy. But he's been up here a long while. So anyway, I just texted him while we were talking. He's out in Las Vegas at the ICSC show. And he said, what are y'all doing there? He knows, you know, he asked, he's already asked me what we're going to put there. Barry, I can't tell you.
I, I agree with everything, except I firmly believe that $100,000 simply ain't enough money. I'll make a motion that we approve everything they're asking for with the staff comments and make the contribution $200,000. Now, if it flies, it flies. If it don't, I'm okay.
Okay, is that, we, we do have, if you withhold on the motion, Mr. Peterson's in the queue.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Altizer, did you want to speak again, too?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Peterson. I'll come in after he's ahead.
Okay, but you hold on to your hat there for a second. We'll come back to you. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, thank you. I have a, a question about the Bradford Berry House. I know this is kind of going off point, but who owns that house?
Mr. Witten?
I believe it's the, uh, Jack May.
I'm sorry, who?
I believe it's Jack May. Is the current owner, I mean, they allow...
Yeah, that's the one.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Is he donating it to the city? Or how does, how do we go about... Or how does, how do we go about may, I'm sorry, I'm just lost about this house. I, I've never seen it, because it's covered up in trees, but I've heard that, that it, it's in disrepair. I may be wrong, but is this something that the city's gonna take over? Or is it gonna be a tourist attraction or part of something else?
I should've explained, so, they, the applicant has offered to, upon approval of their development plan, of their, getting, getting their lot recorded and a couple of other things, it's outlined in the, in the letter, that they, that they would dedicate the house, some of the property that it sits on, and the, and the cemetery to the city. And then at that point, it would be up to the city what they do with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Altizer?
Mr. Hasty, you know, going back to one of the questions you asked about having an association, if you look at the backside of the office depots and those areas, because of them being fee simple and getting them over to the property holders, those areas are in very bad disrepair, okay? The ponds, the storage basins, stuff of that nature. So, I would go back to what you're saying, and I would be in favor of something in there that would maintain the properties and take care of them, okay? Because right now, we see a lot of it on the backside of that that's not in good shape, and the roadways are in very poor shape.
Okay. Okay, so, let's recap here just for a moment. The property, it's already an approved plan, but we have this issue now where if Mr. May owns the Bradford Berry House, and it's essentially being sold to, to you folks, and you're turning around and re, and donating it back, okay? So, that's the first issue right there. And the issue is, is at that point, you're donating the land back and $100,000 for, I'm guessing refurbishments? Okay, all right, so that's, that's kind of that issue right there. And then, the second issue is, is as this, these developments come online, is the organizational side of how this all fleshes out with the infrastructure and irrigation and the landscaping, which I think is an incredible thing that needs to be done. I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to do this, then we should make sure that that's in place some kind of way. I, I agree with that. The question I have is this commission's ability to impose that fee, and I like the motion, and if, if he chooses to make the motion, but Mr. Free, give us wisdom and clarification here from the planning commission's, the planning staff standpoint on this.
I think on both those items, first, the item of, it certainly would be good if there was a, an organization, collective organization of a POA or something that, that took care of maintenance of it. I don't know that on a commercial setting, that, that is something we can necessarily require, but we're dealing with a planned development here.
Right.
So.
That's the issue.
And we're dealing with two things. We're, we've got adding the use, which, you know, we can, we're adding the use, but then also, it's approving the final development plan for this seg, for this segment. And going back, going back on it, you know, what the whole deal was, is that that first, first phase, it got approved with kind of this hiccup of, of, or catch, that, okay, you can, you can do that first, that first part, but if you, once you want to do the rest of that, which is what they're wanting to do right now, once, and these, not these developers, it was the previous developer. But, once anybody gets to that point, then that's gonna trigger moving the house, doing something to, you know, to the house and all that, it's not really super defined on what that is, and then that's where we find ourselves right now. I think, you know, I think, I think it's reasonable that there is some dollar amount, you know, to what that is, whether that's $100,000 or $200,000, you know, certainly another $100,000 probably makes it, makes it difficult on the developer, but $100,000 isn't gonna go very far, and we're not talking, I don't think, with $100,000 or $200,000 or $400,000, none of that is gonna go necessarily to restoring the house. It's probably just gonna go to getting it where the weather's not, you know, destroying it. The, the restoration will be far exceed, exceed that amount. But, I don't think it's completely unreasonable. I, I would like to see maybe, based on the discussion of the $200,000, on what the developer's position is, on whether they would be willing to accept that. Ultimately, this is going to, going to BOMA, and then this is something that not we're gonna accept at the planning commission, but that BOMA is gonna accept as, okay, if they approve it, then they're saying, yes, we want to eventually get that house and, and $100,000 or $150,000 or $200,000 or $250,000, whatever, whatever the amount is, that we're, we're okay with that. So, this is, this is a little bit different, so I don't think it is, is unreasonable to say $200,000, and I don't think it's, it's out of, you know, out, necessarily out of line, but it, but it's because we're dealing with a planned development. But, I would feel, it would, you know, having the specifics of that, I would feel more comfortable with it if it was the preliminary development plan we were talking about, but we're talking about the final development plan, which is, is changing a little bit from the preliminary, because they're not moving the house.
Right.
There, there's some savings, savings to that. I think at the end of the day, I think it just meant to the city, it's just, is this house, you know, is, is the, whatever the eventual deal is that BOMA accepts, is it, you know, is that worth saving that house or having some opportunity to do? But, and really what's happened is, this little, this kind of catch we've had on this thing is really what's kept it from developing all these years, is because the house was tied to it, and, you know, whoever was gonna develop was gonna have to do something. And probably that cost of relocating, you know, any developer would know, you know, that that would be a substantial cost to, to move an old structure like that, and that would be, that'd be quite a, you know, quite an expense to do that. So, I guess in the, in the, to shorten it, is I don't think it would be unreasonable to do that, but, you know, I would, I would like to see it be something that the developer would, you know, acknowledge that they're okay with, but, but I don't think it necess, that necessarily has to happen, you know, for this to, for this to move forward.
Thank you, Director Free. And I, I would just say, you know, having heard that, we might ask the developer on his initial comments. I would much rather see the developer say, you know, that is something that we could work for or willing to look at and work towards that, rather than us putting a motion on the floor for this, and, and it could pass or it could fail, who knows? But, and then on the other issue with the, with the upkeep, let me ask this question, maybe of Timothy. If every commercial property that came online, would we not be able to impose some rules and regulations as it relates to upkeep and landscaping and irrigation and all those kinds of things for every commercial property that would come online?
Well, yes, and we do, and you.
We've always done that.
We've always, yeah, every, every commercial lot that develops, they, they do the landscaping, they're also required to maintain that landscaping over time.
So, anyway, that would, other than the roads, which will end up not, they'll be, they'll be our roads, am I right?
So, well, the, the, the road that kind of feeds the back of those three outlots running on Main Street, that would be public. I believe they are proposing, the applicant's proposing that the rest of that spine street on the west side going up north to be private.
Be private, okay.
Which, which generally speaking, there would be, well, there, there would have to be limits and restrictions as to who bore the responsibility for the maintenance of that, those, those private streets.
So, whether it's developer, or if they do form an association to handle that.
Correct.
With the lease, leases that they would get from the buildings that are built, right?
Correct.
Okay. So then, there we go. So, that, I'm gonna ask the developer to stand to them, up to the microphone, and Mr. Hasty, I'm gonna turn this over to you and ask the question.
Well, I mean, I just think the hundred is a little less, and I hate to put you on the spot, I mean, it kind of nailing you up here, but, I, I mean, the hundred thousand is, was apparently a number that was kind of like, eh, that's a good number, let's go with it. You know, I would like to get more, but what is your opinion on the hundred thousand versus any additional funds for the restoration, the maintenance and the upkeep? Because, you know, the city's gonna accept a, a major liability here. If they accept it, and I'm, don't know, but I'm pretty sure that.
But that's what we were told the city wanted. I mean, that the city wants this property because they want to save the house.
Sure.
They don't want the house to continue to deteriorate.
And I, and I think they will accept it. Then the only thing that we're talking about is the contribution.
We're certainly willing to consider and go back and look and see if we can sharpen the pencil, but that's a lot more money. It, it says, I was talking to the Historical Commission last night, and you guys all know this, we buy land, we have to buy land, land's crazy now, buildings are crazy, the construction is, tenants will only pay so much in rent, so we have to, you know, we're, we obviously are not in it for the experience, we're trying to make a little money, and, you know, with the land, what it is, development costs of just, it's crazy, and, you know, having to go all the underground utilities, good example, there's three switch gears in here. Switch gears are about $30,000 a piece from Nashville Electric. You know, there's $100,000 just because of the, that's just to pay them for the, that doesn't include the rest of the stuff. So, anyway, I'm going, I'm rattling here, but we just have to look at it and see if we, if there's an extra $100,000 in, in the budget. But I can't, I, candidly, I can't commit, I don't have the authority to commit to spend that $100,000 to you tonight. Is that fair? I mean.
Okay. Is there, are you ready for a motion?
Okay, Mr., I think I saw, Mr. Hardcastle, did you have something? I'm, I just keep going back and forth. We're asking this man for $200,000 that we don't know that the city's gonna use to fix the building.
Right.
So, what, what is fair about that? Unless the city commits to taking the $200,000 and fixing that building, we can't ask this man for $200,000 that we don't know what the city's gonna do with it.
Which, by the way, is a question that BOMA would have to settle.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. You know, I, I was gonna say, all right, I'll go with the $100,000. If you will meet with the planning staff and the Histor, Historical Commission, and see if there's some compromise on you being able to benefit assets, money, whatever, to enhance the restoration of the Berry House and the maintenance of that property out there. You know, we just leave it at the $100,000 right now, and he's committed.
Absolutely committed, I'll make with it.
And he's gonna get with them and see if there's, see if he can find a few more pennies under the couch.
Yes, sir.
And help us out with that restoration and whatnot. Okay?
Well, and I, I think that if it's done properly, that it's only gonna bring more business into that area, the house and everything else around it. So, you know, it stands to reason that I think there is a, a long game for us making sure that that is well-funded. Ms. Longmire?
Yes, I, I would just like to say that I think a lot of people don't realize what a gem this Bradford Berry House can be and is. And we definitely want to do what can be done to save it, because if something's not done, it will eventually fall down. $100,000 is like spinning in a jar when you start doing construction, particularly today with everything gone sky high. Now, my understanding is, is that we do have some roof problems. If they had moved this property off of the base that it is now, it would no longer be eligible to be put on the historic register.
Right.
All right, and I, I believe I'm correct in saying that Sarah Berry added a wing on this house from what it originally was. When you add on to, you have destroyed that, so that would have to be taken into consideration, what the city wanted to do with it, were this to go through. But we definitely want to save the house, and $100,000 is a start, but it is nowhere near enough just to main, just to maintain. I'm not talking about any kind of improvement, I'm not talking about taking up the wing off, I'm not, I'm just talking about the things that we have to do to preserve it. So, I think, I don't think it's unreasonable that we ask for more, and I know that people, I'm in the real estate business, I know what people will pay, and I have seen people pay things crazy this year, crazy. I had a house listed just a couple of weeks ago that was listed for $469,900, and I had eight offers, the, the one that bought it was $497,000, and that happened in 24 hours.
I know, it's crazy.
So, it's crazy. And people who are building can't get wallboard, they can't get roofing materials, they can't, everything is short ordered, and I don't think all of that is out there on the, in the boats in the harbor.
Yeah.
They're just not making it.
And that's some of the dilemmas we're gonna face when we try to get these buildings built.
That's right.
Labor's crazy, material's crazy.
But, but this looks like a nice development, and it, and it would be an asset to Hendersonville, it'll bring in tax dollars, but at the same time, it's also gonna be a profit to the person in the, that's doing the development.
And I freely admit, we're in it to make money.
Absolutely, but, but we're in it to get them as much money as we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is something that will be, have to be picked up by the city if this goes through as is presented.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, I think we need to realize that we do need to keep this place, and when you keep a historic place, or any, anything for that matter, your own home, it's gonna cost money to own it.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
It's not free.
Okay. Okay, so, here's where we're at. We're at a place where I think we have discussed this, and there's been some great comments made, but basically, we're going to propose that we approve this with all staff comments, with the provide, with the provision that the developer would go back to staff, and let's see if we can't sharpen the pencil a little bit to put a little bit more into that. And, and then on the association issue, where we're talking about upkeep, that we would take into account the, that, that other processes where properties come online with site plans, that we deal very vigorously with that issue of upkeep, and as we would at any other commercial area. Am I right, Mr. Whitten?
Yes, and I would just clarify that, that once, once the Brad, once the Bradford Berry House gets dedicated to the city, that's its own lot, any, any landscaping on that is the city's responsibility, it would not be passed on to any of the other surrounding property owners.
Right. Okay, so that's kind of where we're at, commissioners, and if anybody wants to make a motion to accept this with the added-on uses of restaurant and quick service, I'm entertaining that motion. Mr. Coker?
So moved.
So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson? Okay. Any more discussion? First was, it was Mr. Coker that made the motion, second by Mr. Peterson. All right? And any more discussion, hearing done? Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
I will abstain.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
That's all nine, or, I'm sorry, that's eight and one abstention.
Okay. Okay, now, the next thing that we have here is the twice daily at Center Point Road, and this is the Future Land Use and Transportation Plan Amendment, character area change from suburban living to suburban center. And Director, we're, we're gonna need two motions on this one, am I correct on that?
That's correct. One thing, one thing I, one, one thing I might mention is, we did get, we did get an email on this, about this, this rezoning, in addition to the public comments that were made from Louis Friedman, and then everybody has a copy of, of that, and what, what they had on that, so I just wanted to bring, bring attention to that. But this is too, this is a, this is a change to the future. But this is too, this is, this is a change to the Future Land Use Amendment.
And then the zoning.
And then to the zoning, those need to be two separate votes. And we only have nine members here this evening. So it's kinda odd, we've run this before, is that it will take six votes to change the future land use of, uh, plan. And then five to approve the rezoning. Just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, at this point, what I'm gonna do is invite the developer up. And Mr. Whitten, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the developer come up if he's here and be ready. But let's go ahead and hear the report on the Twice Daily, the staff report. And then if developer's present, we'll, he's been here the whole time, and so we're gonna, we're gonna ask him some questions about all that. But Mr. Whitten, bring us up to date on the staff report, if you would.
Okay. This is a 5.3-acre site located at the intersection of Caldwell Drive and Centerpoint Road. It's currently zoned, a state residential, which allows one acre, single-family residential lots. The Future Land Use Plan shows this as suburban living, character area. Twice Daily is requesting a rezoning to general commercial, planned development, and amendment of the Future Land Use Plan to suburban center to accommodate a proposed fuel station and convenience market. There would be a substantial buffer between the proposed structures and the residential zoned lots to the, to the northwest, which is, that's, that's the floodplain, the crate that's been discussed. And they're proposing a thirty-foot buffer adjacent to the residence to the northeast, which is owned residential, that's ten feet wider than zoning requires. Across Centerpoint Road is the church, and some residences north of the church. To the west, there's a general commercial zoned lot at the corner, which is where the seasonal sales occurs, like the pumpkin patch and Christmas tree lot, fireworks, et cetera. And then there are city-owned residential lot to the north of that G.C. zone lot. The Twice Daily will be just like the one that was just approved in Indian Lake Village on Saundersville Road, as far as the look of the building. And it's all, even the site is very similar to that. They have agreed to all staff comments.
Okay, before we recognize the developer, I think I wanna bring in Public Works. Sarah, if you would, there was a lot tonight about the floodplain and about, and there are several staff comments here, which is showing that they're agreeing with all staff comments. But as Public Works Director, can you kind of help us walk through some of the concerns that they have about the floodplain, about the buffering and that kind of thing, please?
Yeah, certainly. So as you can see, the inside portion that's shaded a little bit more, more hatched than the rest, that's the floodway. You cannot develop within a floodway. Someone said you can't develop in the floodplain. It's the floodway. And then the outside border, that is the floodplain, that's the hundred-year floodplain. And you can develop within the floodplain, you just have to, you have to follow a set of rules. We have a floodplain ordinance. Those were some of my comments. They would have to submit a development, development permit to develop within the floodplain. And part of that will be to show a no rise. So they will need to provide calculations, sorry, they will need to provide calculations showing that they will not be increasing the flood level.
Okay.
So that's part of the development process.
And let's, let's address traffic concerns from the public works standpoint. Where are we sitting on that from your standpoint?
So we restricted the access on Caldwell Drive to right-in, right-out. Centerpoint is a higher classification roadway, but because the driveway is much further from the intersection, we decided that it was better to restrict the access on Caldwell because it is so close to the signalized intersection. They are being required, as part of this approval, to provide a traffic impact study with their site plan. And any recommendations that are made from that to mitigate the traffic effects of developing this site will be required with that submitted.
That has not been done at this point.
Correct.
And they would not go forward with the site plan until this is all rezoned anyway.
Correct.
So there's, there are really no knowns, no givens right now. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so the developer, if you would, you listened to the public hearings tonight, and can you address some of these concerns people have about the floodplain, about the traffic, from a developer's standpoint?
I'll do my best. I'm Phil Castorline, with CSR Engineering, representing TriStar and Twice Daily and Mike Bison. From sitting in the audience, the biggest comments that I heard were traffic, safety, and flooding. So to address the flooding, I agree with Sarah. In that area, there's a floodway that's several feet in elevation down below the current pad elevation of this site. And then the site itself, we're proposing to stay out of the floodplain to not have to deal with the letter of map provision with FEMA and cause any adverse impacts to the regulated floodway. Looking at traffic, it's already a busy intersection. We're proposing extensions of the turn lanes on Centerpoint and enter property circulation that allows for more of a queue to exit the property on Centerpoint. And then the right-in, right-out on Caldwell just also alleviates some of that intersection congestion. What I hear mostly with the traffic is related to the school. That's several hundred yards down the road. Wouldn't think that the convenience store would hinder or change existing traffic. It provides a resource for people using that route to stop and get fuel and coffee and that sort of thing. And from the owner's standpoint, it, it's a good location to provide a service to the community.
Okay. Okay, are there any questions for, Ms. Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. If I may ask, could you walk us through the egress onto Centerpoint Road, please? I have some concerns, and it's hard to tell from the drawings exactly how close. There's a curve, and it appears that your exit point up there on Centerpoint Road would be right at the curve of Centerpoint Road, which is also a hill, and I have some line of sight concerns. Again, it's hard to tell from the drawings we have, but can you walk me through where that egress point is?
From where that egress point is, it's in the outside of the curve. So the people traveling down Centerpoint will be able to see the approaching cars. And any sight distance issues will have to be addressed. But at this stage, it's, it's more of a concept plan than it is a final site plan. And then exiting the site, it's a dedicated through lane with a dedicated right lane onto Caldwell. So leaving to the right, you would get in the queue with the traffic that's already there. And then leaving to the left, you'll have to wait for the light to cycle. But we're far enough away from the intersection that it's typically an option to be able to make that turning movement.
The, the floodway diagram, Sarah, was that updated as of, as of the 2010 flood? So that's where the lines are now? Or is that the most recent lines?
Yeah, I believe that was a 2012 map.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any more questions for Ms. Silkwood? More questions?
Yes, one more question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You may not know this, but what will the hours of operation be for this convenience store?
I'm not sure at this time.
Do you know if it's a 24-hour store? If it will close at midnight? Do you have any idea? And we're talking about potentially changing the character area for this parcel, so we would need to have an understanding of how that's gonna impact the neighborhood.
Right.
Because there really isn't much commercial to speak of, other than a very small market much further down the way. So if this is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365-days-a-year store, that's a lot different than something that's just open, you know, 6:00 a.m. to midnight or something like that.
I would venture to guess that the owner would be amenable to store hours, given the area that it's in. But I can't definitively say yes or no.
Right. Okay, any more commissioners have questions? Ms. Longmire?
Several of the people that spoke talked about alcohol being sold in this store. And I know there is the Centerpoint Baptist Church, I think it's called, right across the street. And I don't know how far this, I don't know what the state requirements are about the distances.
I think Director Free said 150 feet in this case. Twice Daily would have to meet those restrictions. They would have to be more than 150 feet away from Centerpoint, well, it's not Centerpoint Baptist.
And is that, is that the closest corner to the church? Or where, where is that measured from?
Yeah, yeah, it would be, and Timothy, tell me if I'm wrong, but it would be whatever the closest corner of this building to the closest corner of a church.
Must be at least 150 feet.
It has to be more than that, yeah.
And regarding schools, does that have to do with the physical building? Or does that have to do with the property that is school land?
I think it's still just the corner of buildings.
Buildings.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, that's not gonna apply?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. We don't do that in planning. That's, that's the, I guess, the beer board and all that, all that stuff. But, but it's 150 feet from the edge of the buildings.
So the question as to whether or not they can do it has to do with this church, and that doesn't have anything to do with the school in reality?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I don't know, but is it, is it true that all of the Twice Dailys that you know anything about do sell at least beer? They do not?
Mm-hmm. And I don't know if that's a regulatory issue, or if that's an owner's choice, or what the decision on that is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longmire. Okay, I don't see any other lights on right now from any other commissioners. So the first, you can be seated, that's fine. Thank you so much for your help. The first thing we're gonna do is take a motion, kinda test the commission's will here, on an amendment to change the, from suburban living to suburban center. And just for purposes of getting it on the floor, I would entertain a motion for a change from suburban living to suburban center. And if any commissioner would like to make that motion, doesn't mean that you're locked into it, but we do need to have, I think, a positive motion, and then we'll go from there. Okay? Do I have a motion to change the Future Land Use and Transportation Plan Amendment from character, character change from suburban living to suburban center? That's what we need first. Okay? We need, we need a motion to get it on the floor.
As you know, I will make motions, but.
Sure.
I will make a motion that we put it on the floor, but I'm gonna also tell you, there's a greater possibility that I'm gonna vote no to my own motion.
So you, you, and that's perfectly permissible. But we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second for the same reasons.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we have a motion and a second. Properly done. Any more questions?
Yes, one more question.
Ms. Longmire?
Tell me the basic difference of, from when we make this change, if this change was made from suburban living to suburban whatever.
Center.
Center. Tell me the biggest change in that.
Timothy, go over the uses one more time that adds on to the equation when we go from suburban living to suburban center.
So there's, there's, well, there's, there's a number of, you know, wholesale uses that are available to suburban center. However, this being a planned development, they have restricted the use to the fuel center and the convenience market.
So just, it only applies to this one?
Correct. It would, yes, it would, yes. So the, so the change to the land use plan would affect only this lot?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Longmire. Mr. Coker?
Just had a question for Timothy on that, just as clarification. If we voted for this motion on the floor, though, and then we did not approve the project or anything like that, we've already changed the character use, which would open it up to everything then that falls under that designation. Correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I don't see any more commissioners with their microphones on. So Ms. Berry? We're voting on whether to change the character area in the Future Land Use Transportation Plan from suburban living to suburban, suburban center. And so that's what we're doing. Okay? Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
No.
Coker?
No.
Hardcastle?
No.
Hasty?
No.
Longmire?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Silkwood?
No.
Stringfellow?
No.
And Jenkins?
No.
That's all nine, no. The motion fails.
Okay, thank you. And now we're going to the, the rezone itself on the Twice Daily Centerpoint Road. And, you know, basically, with any kind of rezone, we have to enter a findings of fact. And so on this particular motion, all of the things we have mentioned previously, having to do with floodway, with traffic, with the area itself, with all the issues that, that have come, that would be restrictive, in our estimation, that it would not be recommended to BOMA for rezoning. And so do I have a commissioner that would entertain that kind of motion for this particular rezone request?
Well, we may need to just get it on the floor. I'm tempted to make a motion to deny after the previous motion, and I don't think I'm in too much harm's way.
It would be fine to do that.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend BOMA not rezonate.
But we still, we still have to have findings of fact to go along with that.
All right, yeah, these are, you know. Now, the zone change amendment is in disagreement with the land use plan. So we don't do that. And I think it will adversely affect the adjoining property owners. And I don't think it's overwhelmingly in the public good and welfare. I don't wanna make the same mistake I made again on Twice Daily. If you recall, I reluctantly voted for the last one, and I'll vote no on this one. And I wish I had a chance to vote no on that other one again.
Okay, we, we have the motion. Ms. Berry's got all that, and she'll edit it out and make it simpler. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Mr. Altizer? Any more, don't see any more lights? Okay, Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine, motion passes.
And I would just say, while we have denied this tonight, we do appreciate Twice Daily. And they do a great service for our community. And we have several locations in Hendersonville and the surrounding areas. And so this denial tonight by no means impedes upon Twice Daily. We just feel like that this is probably not the best location for that expanding business. I, I frequent Twice Dailys all over Nashville, so they're great, great products. But thank you so much.
I'd like to follow up on that just a little bit. It's not that I have anything wrong with Twice Daily, but the other one, you know, my comment that night was, we're putting another service station here.
Right.
In sight of a Thornton's and a Speedway. And I really didn't felt like we needed it. But nothing against Twice Daily.
Sure, sure.
And we had an individual speaker tonight. I can walk to any of those places that sell the same service. So it's not so much against Twice Daily, it's just that the need for the community and the impact that it would have.
Thank you, Mr. Hasty. All right, thank you very much. We're gonna move on now to site plans. And the first one will be the, by the way, a great discussion, commissioners, and great questions. I appreciate your help tonight. I appreciate your help tonight. Jackson Commercial Parking Lot Edition. Owner Sean Jackson. And Sidney, I think you're doing this one.
Yes, so last year in 2020, the Jackson Town Homes presented a combination preliminary and final development plan for their property at 660 East Main, which is just east of the St. Timothy Church there. And then also a little odd-shaped triangle piece that connects at the tip-top corner there, that we'll lovingly call the rear parcel for the intents of this discussion. What we're looking at tonight is that front parcel. In April of this year, they presented a final plat to subdivide that property. That final plat has not yet been recorded. But what this is looking at is the site plan for the front portion that will be subdivided at some very soon point in the future. And that site plan is a parking lot addition for the existing house that's been there for quite some time. This is going to provide 29 parking spaces in total. And the applicant has agreed with all staff comments.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the applicant, the developer here? Like to make any comments about this?
Mitchell Lastley with Greenland Design. I don't have any further comments, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any questions? Mr. Hasty?
Office use on here requires 11 spaces. Do you have a specific use that you plan to put here that requires 29?
No, sir. Not anything in particular. The client, the owner, he was adamant about 29. But as far as I know, it may be like a law office or something like that. But maybe a little overzealous with the 29 parking spaces. And if you, I mean, if we need to reduce them, if you're not comfortable with 29.
Well, it depends upon his use. But if he's going to put a law office in that house, you know,
It could be something similar to that, yes, sir.
Unless it's Morgan &amp; Morgan, it's going to bring a lot of clients with them.
I was going to say, there's going to be a lot of people in trouble having to go there.
I mean, that's fine, but I mean, I don't, I hate to see any development pay more area than is necessary, if we can leave it green.
Sure.
So
I'll get with the developer, the owner, and see what we can do about that.
Yeah, not exceed 29, for sure.
If I can clarify, when they did that combination development plan, they included a whole slew of listed, of uses that could be included on that property. So this, any of those uses would be allowed in this building.
Okay. All right. They've agreed to all staff comments. Do we have a motion to accept the site plan with all staff comments? Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Peterson has a question, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to make the motion.
Oh, please. You're my hero, go for it.
Okay. I make the motion to accept the site plan for the front parcel for a parking lot.
Second, by Ms. Stringfellow, motion made by Mr. Peterson. Mr. Altizer, you want to speak?
Oh, no, I'm just prepared for
Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
That's all nine, it passes.
Thank you. Okay, the next site plan we have is the 216 Sanders Ferry Assisted Living. And, okay, Director Free, I want, like, I know that Timothy's going to handle this as a particular Sanders Ferry, but express this comment and also kind of where we're sitting on the, on the site plan before us with regard to the public hearing and that kind of thing.
Yes, I can do that. I just, I wanted to share, everyone has before you, like I shared with the email previously on the other item, everybody has a copy of the email from John Prentice. And you can see there some of Mr. Prentice's comments and concerns about this. You know, again, this is a, this is a site plan, so there's not a public hearing, so there's really not the opportunity for that. But anytime that we get something from the public, and we got this, we just want to share that with the Planning Commission as well. And then Timothy can kind of go into some of the detail in regards to this particular, particular project. You know, and one thing, you know, this is, this is the project that previously, I think, was a project that was denied on this location. And so through that whole process, we made it very clear what was actually allowed on that, which was a certain number or unit of assisted living and memory care that was allowed with a previously approved conditional use. But Timothy can provide more information.
And that was the only thing that was permitted?
That's correct. The only, well, the, other than what the underlying zone would allow
Right, right.
is
As far as conditional use.
That's correct. That's correct.
All right, Mr. Whitten?
Thank you. Yeah, so this is, this site was before y'all, back in July and August with the application for a rezoning to accommodate an independent living facility. That, of course, that was denied. This is that same site, it's 216 Sanders Ferry, and it's currently zoned SR1. The owner has submitted a new application for a use that is allowed by right, assisted living through a conditional use permit. There's no rezoning required for this. There's no amendment to the future land use plan required for this. So since this is, since use, this use is allowed by right, the only really question for discussion is, does the plan meet the site plan in design review requirements? If they are determined to meet those requirements, then there's really no basis to deny it. It should be approved. The permitted density for assisted living is 20 units per acre, or 128 units for 6.4 acre site. They're proposing 128 units. The building will be three stories, 35 feet tall. That meets the maximum imposed by the ordinance. They're providing all the required buffers, north, west, and south perimeter of the site. And they have agreed to all staff comments.
Okay, is the developer here tonight? Okay? Walk us through a little bit. Sometimes it's hard to tell on these pictures what things look like. And walk us through the materials, walk us through everything about this project that you can that will help us understand what's actually going to look like.
Sure. My name is Will Hager with Loos Design, representing Mr. Greg Lutfi. As you might remember, this site has kind of been an evolution. And throughout that evolution, we've heard your comments about preferred materials. Yeah, preferred materials and, and things like that. So what that has led us to is primarily brick structure, brick and stone structure on exterior materials, certain types of glazing, and certain types of architectural elements. Now, this was, did not fall into the old town zoning that effort was denied. But we've still tried to carry that building and the theme of that building to this smaller three-story structure that we presented before you. We've worked with Shane and other staff to meet the circulation requirements, the parking requirements, and the buffer requirements. And we've also talked to Timothy about potential greenway alignments that are a desire for the city, too. Our clients are in agreement with those requests, and just interested in your
What, Timothy, are the requirements? Say it one more time. I believe there's 128, how many spaces?
128 units.
How many parking spaces are we?
I have the number right, right off, but it's a combination of structured parking and surface parking.
Eighty, how much did you say? Eighty-three? Okay.
And that includes staff and guest parking.
All right, and that meets all, all guidelines? Okay, yeah. Just wanted to get that out there. All right. Any other questions by commission? If I understood them right, 128 units. Go ahead, Will. What are the numbers of parking spots?
Was it eighty, eighty-three, Timothy, for the parking, total parking? Yes, eighty-three are provided. Forty-one spaces were required.
Yep.
Forty-one spaces required, you're giving eighty, you're doing eighty-three?
Right.
Okay. And there's 128 units?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Well, most of it's structured.
Last guy that was up here.
Yeah, I understand your concern. If you look at it, a good number of those are actually underneath the building. So it's partially structured. And we do have some surface parking to the rear.
You have a whole lot on the east side of your building.
On the west side.
Is that the west side?
Yes, sir.
Saunders Ferry that are all just circle parking.
Well, I mean, we're, we're open to reducing it if that's, if that's a concern.
I mean, I, you know, I mean, I, why pay if you don't have to?
Well, that also serves as our fire access route around the building. So
Yeah, okay.
Parking is a bit additional pavement. But if that's a concern, we can
Well, if it's a fire access issue, then there you go.
Okay, if you've got a road and you've got to have that for the outriggers for the fire, okay.
That's it.
Should have known that.
That makes sense.
It's been easy expedations.
That makes sense. All right, any, any more questions? I see no lights.
I got one.
Okay, Ms. Hasty?
On the site plan, you show a connection to Connie Drive. You show it to your property line. Who's going to make the actual asphalt connection to Connie Drive?
It actually connects to the interroad, the apartment complex. The connection was driven by
Fire comments. He wanted a secondary access, so it's really an emergency access that'll be gated. But we'll make that connection to
You will actually make connection asphalt to asphalt.
And it will be gated only for fire department use, or emergency access.
And meets the fire department's grade requirements.
Yes, sir.
I think the same thing exists around the Nottingham, in the very back there.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Coker?
Want to go back to the question Commissioner Hasty asked that I didn't get a clear answer to. You're required to have 41 parking spots. You've got a plan with 83. Why?
Well, it's serving employees, it's serving the residents, and it's also serving their guests. We were able to do it pretty easily, once we routed that service road around the site. So we've added that there.
Would 41 not be sufficient for that, then? Because I know our staff and our, our regulations for this permitted use. So they, there's some thought process that goes into that. That number's not just arbitrary. Why do you feel that you need to double it?
It was just easy to do. I mean, if it's a concern for the Planning Commission, we can definitely reevaluate that.
For me, and this is editorial, it is a concern. And I mean, it's just that we can't, I know we're looking at this project in a vacuum, but we can't. I mean, we've, we've got a history here on this, earlier this summer. And seeing two pages worth of staff comments worth that have not been addressed for stuff as basic as, good grief, provides physical sample materials for review and approval.
Those were, those were actually provided.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Then you've got a page worth of public works note here on this. I think you're breaking this back way too soon. I'm going to vote against site plan tonight for that reason, because there are just too many unanswered questions that need to be addressed. And I'll go on and give the caveat. When you come back with it, if, I want every question addressed on that. And I'm going to vote against the site plan until every single question is addressed on that, just because I, I'll be honest, I don't trust what's going on here. And so that's just, you're going to have to satisfy everything. So I just want to let you all know that now, but I appreciate your time.
I appreciate your comment. For the commission at large, we've agreed to every staff comment. And many of the conditions that have been listed have already been met.
Okay, Timothy, just the pages of staff comments here to the staff's, planning staff's ability, and is everything been answered?
Yes.
Okay, so all, all the comments that Mr. Coker's talking about here that are concerns, they have been, they've been addressed?
They, well, they have agreed to address them. So if this is, if this is approved with all staff comments, they'll have to make a resubmital. All these comments will, will have to be addressed on that set of plans to staff satisfaction. If staff is satisfied that they meet those comments, then it will be stamped approved.
Okay, all right. So that, that helps us all to understand what's going on here.
On those material samples, we did have a set of samples floating around, floating around that did not have a name attached to them. Now I know why.
Apologize for that.
All right, thank you very much. Just wanted to clarify that for the commission. So these, these comments that are numerous, and by the way, I mean, there are several staff reports that have numerous staff comments in them. So Ms. Stringfellow?
Thank you. I just have one question. Is it assisted living, or is it also independent living?
It is only assisted living and memory care.
Okay, great, because independent would require space maybe if they live there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, there are no more commissioners wishing to speak. So I would entertain a motion to accept with all staff comments. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept with all staff comments.
Thank you. You got a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hardcastle seconds the motion. All right. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
No.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow? And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's eight and one, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we move to the Texas Roadhouse Site Plan, and we'll turn it over to Timothy.
This site's located next to Jonathan's Grill off of Indian Lake Boulevard. It's about 8,800 square feet in size, 28-foot building height. 89 parking spaces are required, they're providing 174. They're, of course, they are moving from the, or proposing to move from their Glenbrook Way site to this, this site. They are requesting a number of waivers. On the staff report, there are six. And one of those has been resolved with staff, that's number two. So number two has been withdrawn, they no longer need a waiver for, for that. But I'll just go through these waivers one by one. The first one, five-foot-deep foundation planting beds are required along all publicly visible building walls, except at building entries and exits. And generally, the way we, the way we look at that is, we're not, we're not looking for every linear foot that isn't a building entry has to have a five-foot foundation planting. We're, we're just looking for the bulk of it to have foundation planting beds. So they provided that on the, on the north, and the west, and the south sides. On the east side, which is also their main entry, they're asking for a waiver to not have any planting beds there. And their response is there in the staff report. You want me to read through those, or?
Please.
Okay. So their response to that, for number one, as you can see from the project's proposed site plan, we were unable to move the building west so as to provide a continuous five-foot wide landscape bed along the east side of the building. If we move the building west, we will not have 24-foot-wide drive aisles, 18-foot-long parking stalls, or five-foot-wide sidewalks. Lastly, the east side of the building will have outdoor benches, as well as the building's front doors, to-go room, to-go room door, stone columns for the front door, roof gable, and to-go room sliding window. Additionally, the building's eastern sidewalk is only nine and a half feet wide. However, 32 inches of the sidewalk needs to, needs to be accessible for wheelchairs. On account of these items, we are unable to provide any landscape beds or planter boxes on the east side of the building. So my response to that would be, with this being the front of the building, it is, it's more important to staff to see planting beds on that side than it is on the west side. So I believe there is room, if the building were shifted, there, I believe there should be room to pick that up, pick some of that up. up, pick some of that up. In addition, the sidewalk on the front is wider than the standard five feet. It's nine-and-a-half feet. So I, I, you know, for myself looking at it, it looks like there is opportunity to carve out at least some spaces for, for planting beds. As they say, they are providing benches along that wall. So some of those might have to go away if they provided some of those planting beds. But, okay. That's my response to that.
All right. And waiver number two goes away, right?
Correct.
All right. Then what's waiver number three?
Number three, uh, "The use of rock and gravel in lieu of hardwood mulch is not allowed in the city design standards or the Indian Lake Village Development Guide." And the, the Development Guide is, uh, just about all of our large plan developments have extra guidelines, restrictions that are imposed on a whole slew of things from building design to landscaping to street design to site lighting and stuff like that. And where this is located in Indian Lake Village, there is a, there's a book that's about that thick of extra guidelines and restrictions. And the Indian Lake Village Architectural Review Committee reviews each set of plans before they come to y'all, and they issue a letter either of approval or denial or approval with conditions. So, um, on this particular waiver request, they are requiring, um, that they adhere to these, uh, standard for hardwood mulch instead of rock. And their, the applicant's response to that is, "It is Texas Roadhouse's wish to keep stone mulch around the building foundation area and in the five parking islands that are adjacent to the building in lieu of the requested shredded hardwood or pine needles. Those areas are highlighted in the graphic below. There is an island that isn't highlighted that should be. That's on the west side of the building." Yeah, right there, that cursor is. Continuing with their response, "Texas Roadhouse prefers to have rock mulch around the building so that they, so that they do not have to worry about customers flicking cigarettes into the building's landscape bed and potentially starting fires. Texas Roadhouse has found that these areas surrounding the building are the most prevalent with cigarette butts and pose the highest risk for fires to emerge." Waiver request number four?
Let me go back to number three real quick. This has not been taken before. Were we just taking this out of the Development Guide, right? The Indian Lake Village Development Guide? So they've not met and actually granted a waiver on their side of the issue.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Not, not that we've been informed about.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, waiver request number four, "Landscape islands, per city standards, should be nine feet wide from curb to curb. They have one island that is nine feet, but it also has a five-foot sidewalk, so they need five more, five additional feet of landscape area in that island. So they're requesting a waiver for that." Again, that's, they're, they're, they're providing that sidewalk, um, to provide pedestrian access to the restaurant. So, um, their response to that, "Texas Roadhouse would like to keep the site's one parking lot landscape island, which is to be eight feet, three inches wide, in lieu of the requested nine-foot width. By extending this parking lot island nine inches so as to meet this nine-foot-wide requirement, the project would be forced to remove two parking stalls. As it stands now, the proposed Texas Roadhouse site can only accommodate 174 parking stalls. The current Texas Roadhouse site, in which is to be closed and relocated to the Indian Lake Village Development, only has 143 parking spots. The existing Texas Roadhouse parking lot is grossly inadequate for Texas Roadhouse's operations. The current Texas Roadhouse restaurant is currently experiencing a high wait time every night, with weekends averaging around one-and-a-half hours for a table. Additionally, the current Texas Roadhouse restaurant has between 65 and 70 team members each shift, which, which eat into the amount of available parking spaces for customers. Ideally, the proposed Texas Roadhouse restaurant would need between 225 and 250 parking stalls so as to satisfy their operations. Overall, Texas Roadhouse would like to keep the proposed parking lot island at eight feet, three inches wide so as to retain as many parking stalls as possible on-site. In this case, 174 parking stalls on the proposed Texas Roadhouse site."
So this waiver simply takes it from nine feet to 8.3. Am I right?
They're, they're talking about the overall parking lot island width. The, what the ordinance is looking for is nine feet of green space.
Okay. Waiver number five?
Number five, uh, city ordinance and the Indian Lake Village Development Guide don't allow more than 10 parking spaces in a row without a landscape island. They have two parking bays that they are requesting a waiver for. There's one on the south side of the building, up against the building, which has a run of 12, and then another bay south of that on the, on the south perimeter of the site that also has a run of 12. And their response to that, "Texas Roadhouse would like to keep two parking lot areas which have 12 consecutive parking stalls in lieu of the requested 10 consecutive parking stall maximum. As it stands now, the proposed Texas Roadhouse site can only accommodate 174 parking stalls." This is, this is a rehash of what they just went through with the previous waivers. I won't read, read the rest of that. And then the final waiver request, "Commercial sites are required to provide a minimum of 25% pervious area or green space." The Indian Lake Village Development Guide also requires the same. Texas Roadhouse is proposing 12%. I, I didn't put this in the staff report, but I will say that there are some projects within Indian Lake Village that have received a waiver for this because, um, based on the fact that the Indian Lake Village Plan Development included a large park in Greenway along the railroad and also along the, uh, the west side of the, the overall development. I don't think any of those waivers were as low as 12%. As my recollection is, they were in the 15 to 20% range. But again, some, some of those projects were granted a waiver based on the strength of the green space that they provided in those parks. Um, I haven't done an analysis of the entire development. That would take a long time. But my guess is, if you looked at the, at the, uh, the development as a whole, all of Indian Lake Village, um, they're on pace to, uh, be well in excess of 25% pervious area across the entire development.
But this, this site would be much less than what we've granted waivers before.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have six waivers. Mr. Whitten, do you have anything else to mention to us about this report?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. So what we have here is, do we have the developer here? Why don't you come on up to the, you know, there's a lot of waivers here, a bunch of waivers, and, uh, you know, we, you've been a good customer, a good tenant for the city of Hendersonville and a good business for us. People love your product. Express to us, you know, why the move, why, why, why you're doing that. And, uh, you're only going to net, if I'm, you've got 143 now, you're going to get 174 out of the deal this time. That's if we grant all the waivers. Give us a, a kind of narrative of why you're doing what you're doing here.
Yeah, absolutely. First off, my name is Brandon Goldberg, and I'm with Greenberg Farrow. We're the designers for the new Texas Roadhouse. To answer your question, Texas Roadhouse is currently leasing, um, the current site. They have not, they had an opportunity to purchase the site, and they have. So this would be them having a long-term presence within the neighborhood and the development. As everyone knows, commercial real estate is really hard to come by, and they're very excited about the opportunity to move here, even if it is granting, you know, 20 or so more parking stalls. They would like to have more of a permanent residence, and that's why they're moving here, even though it's not an ideal parking situation.
Okay. Are there any future development plans on the backside of this particular site? This is going to be a company-owned store. It's going to be a corporate store. It's not a franchise. Okay. So are there any future development plans that you know about?
No, none other than this.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, so let's look at these waivers. And commissioners, I mean, we can do this one of two ways. I, I think that we can, we have to take them one by one, obviously, and just kind of see where we fall on it. But I do think that, that a lot of these waivers, uh, are issues that, uh, they seem nitpicky in, in somewhat, but at the same time, it does set precedent. But at the same time, we don't want to limit a good, a good business owner in Hendersonville. But we need to, uh, to kind of decide which way we want to go with this on each one of these waiver requests. And so I think what I'm going to do here, before we can arrive at a motion to accept the site plan that is given, I just want us to go ahead and go on record on the waivers first. And then we will, uh, we'll come back and we'll flesh out a motion to accept with whatever waivers that we've granted, or it could be that we come back and just say, uh, we're going to accept the site plan with all staff comments and not grant any waivers. So I don't know. But there's so many waivers here. We've got to go through this, and it's a meticulous process, but there's really no other way to deal with this. So, um, let's look at waiver number one. So Mr. Whitten, just give us a, a brief, uh, two or three sentences of what they want, and then we're, we're going to hear from commissioners on this waiver and take a vote.
Sure. They're requesting to have no, uh, foundation planting beds on the east side of their building. They are providing them on the other side.
Okay. So that's the waiver request. Any commissioners have any additional questions to Mr. Whitten or the developer?
I have a question.
Oh, please. Ms. Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So just to clarify, Mr. Whitten, the, the waiver request is for, to provide no planter beds at the front of the building, next to the front doors. Is that correct?
Correct.
And instead of that, there will be benches for people to sit on?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Correct.
You know, I have to come down on the side of Mr. Whitten on this. I, I would really prefer to see some landscaping out front with some planter beds as opposed to benches. I mean, I know it's something that came to fruition over COVID, but I eat at Texas Roadhouse as often as I can and, because I love the chicken salad.
There you go.
And, uh, you know, we've been asked to wait in our car quite a bit, and we'd get a text message. So frankly, I'm not sure how long that'll continue, but I, I do know that I see people doing that still frequently. So, you know, I'm not 100% sure that we'll need those benches out front. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Any more questions? Ms. Longmire?
Yes. Well, my feeling, which I think everybody here knows, I'm not big on waivers. If we have to keep giving a waiver because this doesn't work for this one, and another waiver for another problem, then we need to go back and look at why we are having to give the waiver in the first place. Why have we changed what is needed? So I do think it's kind of nitpicky. I know it is what you all want, and I know, blame you for asking, but I'm not in favor of waivers.
Thank you, Ms. Longmire. All right. I don't see any other commissioners wishing to speak. So we, what I, what I, what I really need here is just a sense of the commission on waiver number one. A motion to give, grant the waiver, a motion to deny, either way. Ms. Longmire makes a motion to deny waiver request number one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay. Properly done. Any more questions? Ms. Berry, call the roll quickly.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
All right. That passes.
Okay. Waiver number two, request goes away.
I got a comment.
Waiver...
Can, can I make a comment? Or we?
We're moving on to waiver request. Do you want to?
I just want to make a comment in general. Can I make a comment?
Yes, sure, sure. Yes.
Uh, I think you see where this is going, right? You think, go back and revise the site plan?
Yeah, Mr. Hardcastle, would you pull your...
Yeah. I, I don't think there's a problem with the amount of property you can have here, and we've got six waivers that basically all have to do with parking. And I, do, do you want to suggest anything else other than us going through six waivers? Um, I mean, yes, they're related to parking and to potential fire hazards with the stone mulch, which is their prototype for just around the building.
Okay. Well, we're, we'll keep going then. Waiver request number three. Timothy?
Okay. This is the, uh, the, the rock mulch waiver. They are requesting to be allowed to use rock mulch in the, the highlighted areas plus the additional one that I had pointed out on the west side of the building instead of hardwood mulch.
Okay. Uh, of course, the Indian Lake Village Development Guide specifies this. Any commissioners have any questions or a motion or anything?
Just a quick question. What type of mulch does the current Texas Roadhouse have? Is it stone mulch or is it pine straw?
I believe it's stone. And it's, um, like they're about five to eight inches in diameter, and I would compare it to like, kind of like a Mexican pebble.
You think I should know that because I've been...
Well, yeah. I don't expect you to be looking down on the ground.
Do you have a comment, Timothy, on that?
Yes. My, my recollection is that was, it was approved with hardwood mulch. I think that was added sometime later. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Ms. Peterson?
I'll make a motion to accept waiver number three.
Second.
We have second on that? All right. Any more? Okay. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right. That's eight and one. It passes.
Okay. So waiver request number three is granted, and just so if we're keeping to it here, waiver request number one, we said no. All right. So now we move on to waiver request number four. Mr. Whitten?
This is the, uh, they have one landscape, uh, landscape island on the south side of the building that does not meet the, uh, the needed nine feet of, of green space. That island is eight-and-a-half feet wide, five feet of that is sidewalk, and they are requesting a waiver for that.
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve? Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Altizer, seconds. Any more questions? Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
No.
Hasty?
No.
Longmire?
No.
Longmire?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, that is six and three, it passes.
Okay, so waivers three and four are yes, waiver one is no. Okay, now we're at waiver number five.
Okay, this, they are proposing two parking bays that have a run of 12, exceeding the maximum of 10.
Two parking bays. Say it again.
They have, they have two parking bays that have a run of 12 parking spaces in each, in each bay. They're limited to a run of 10 without having a landscape island. So they're requesting to have a run of 12 and not have a intervening landscape island.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Motion, questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve waiver request five.
Thank you, Mr. Cope.
Second. Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
No.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, that's six and two, or I'm sorry, seven and two, it passes.
Okay, now we move to waiver request number six. And this is the impervious, dropping from 25% green space to the, to 12%. Do we have, am I, that's, that's what we're talking about here, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions or comments, or would like to amend maybe what they've offered, or whatever? Or motions?
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, please.
Can you tell me why you've reduced it that much?
Just based on the layout of the site, we're meeting all the required landscape setbacks. However, with the building and the associated parking, we're just unable to hit that 25%.
Thank you.
Mr. Cope?
Just a question for staff. I believe the comment was made earlier that we've approved waivers similar to this before in this area. Where does this 12% kind of fall into what we've done before?
On the low end.
Thank you.
As far, as far as, it's on the low end of high, high impervious area request.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have a question. All of these waivers pertain to parking and lack of parking. You're getting 174 stalls, I believe, but down here it says ultimately you need 225 to 250. Is this the right location for this store?
Hold on a second. Go ahead.
Apologize. It's probably the most suitable for what's available for our client.
Will, will you be cannibalizing parking from Jonathan's if, if you're ideally needing, that's twice as many as you're getting?
That would just be for, like, a no wait. Currently, you have to wait up to an hour and a half, but that's where we get that number from, the two and a half hours. But as far as Jonathan's, I can't really say. That's where we're trying to maximize amount of parking on site to limit that effect. But who's to say someone is not going to park over there and walk? I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we just need a motion on this waiver. Motion to accept or motion to deny. Or we could amend. I mean, we could, we, you know, of course Timothy has said that overall, he has, you haven't done a study on this, but it's, it's, it's probably within the 25%, okay? So it's at 12%, so do we grant this waiver or not? We need a motion to accept or deny.
Excuse me, I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, that motion dies for a lack of a second. Do we have another motion?
I make a motion that we approve waiver request number six.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any more questions? Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
No.
Hasty?
No.
Longmire?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
Jenkins?
No.
All right, that fails five to four.
Okay. All right, so we've gone through all the, the waivers, and so it appears that waiver number one was denied, waiver number two was withdrawn, waiver number three was accepted, waiver number four was granted, waiver number five was granted, and waiver number six was not granted, okay? So that's what we're operating on. And at this particular motion, now we just need a motion to accept with all staff comments and vote outcomes on the waivers.
Motion to accept with all staff comments.
Thank you. We have a second. Second by Ms. Stringfellow. All right, all right, Ms.
Including the action on those waivers.
Thank you. All right, we've got it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, it's a discussion before we take the votes.
All right. On waiver number six, if it fails, 25% green space with 12% what they're requesting, where are they going to get that, Timothy? Less parking? Okay. Looks like all the rest of our parking.
Land.
Yeah, that's, and, and I'm sitting here looking at it, can they get more land? They can't get it to the north, they go to the west, it looks like. Is that still available?
To the north is.
It's right of way, isn't it? That's the bypass.
No, it's, it's to the north of this site, there, there's, there's a remainder that, the, the layout that they presented indicates it could be for a hotel, a future hotel. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're, you're right, not to the, to the, to the west.
To the west, it's the only available land, right?
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, they, they, I think on the west side, they might have some room. Mr. Free?
Yeah, so, so with what we've got right now, okay, if it's approved, then it substantially impacts, the only place to get it is going to be the parking.
Yep.
So, so that's going to be a substantial thing. I think what, what the commission is looking for you as a representative of developer is that this 12% definitely does not look like it's going, but you have not provided them any alternative to the 12%. So, and it, as it appears right now, it potentially could be approved, but that waiver for request number six has been denied. So that's, that's quite a bit of land that's going to be, going to be, all those other waivers won't even matter, because you'll have plenty of room.
That was my point. Why did we even care about the other waivers?
Yeah, so I just kind of wanted to, I just wanted to kind of mention, mention that.
And I, I would, I would say, I think Keith mentioned this. We've been working with Texas Roadhouse for quite some time. They've made it abundantly clear from the very outset, they need, they need to maximize their parking. We had concerns about traffic in and around that local site and trying to make sure everything was safe, and there was a lot of back and forth about that. And, you know, we, we made concessions on some things to, you know, to help them along, but they'd made no bones about the fact that, that this is all about parking for them.
Ms. Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, when, when this number six, waiver request number six came, came up, and, you know, I was thinking through it, something, Timothy, that you said early on in this discussion when we were first going through all the waivers the first time around, was that Indian Lake Village as a whole has ample green space because of the parks and because of the greenway, correct? So I didn't think that it was, you know, yes, obviously, it's a big deal when you lose green space. When you look at the Indian Lake Village Development as a whole, it has tons of green space. So that's where my mind went. I mean, we've already taken the vote, but just to let the other commissioners know, that's kind of where I came down on it.
Well, thank you. I, you know, I, I do believe that there is a sweet spot here. I, I think that 12% is, is a low number, I just do. And I do appreciate the fact that 25% overall, that seems to be in keeping with what we're doing. But I think we, we need to hear from you. Is there any, any way that we can get a little, a little bit more?
Unfortunately, we can't go west. The site is currently in, we're having a replat done. The site you see for Texas Roadhouse is the site that Texas Roadhouse is purchasing. We do not have the option to grow the site. The lot line you see is what's proposed. It is going to be for a future hotel to the west. It's not going to be Texas Roadhouse's property. So we, and, you know, we can't go north, we're already, you know, it's the right of way, and we're meeting the landscape buffer to a minimum at that part of the site. So I honestly don't know where we'll get this other 18%, or, I'm sorry, 8% or, I can't do my math, but yeah. I don't understand where we're going to be able to carve out some more space without losing a significant amount of parking.
Well, I, I'm not think, I'm not suggesting that we, we have granted waivers in the past, but 12% is really low. And if we could find a, a sweet spot in between that 12 and 25, I think that the commission might look at this a little differently on waiver number six.
So if we met in the middle, would that be a good starting point?
I think so. I mean, this, this would put us in, in the ballpark of what we've done in the past, but it would also help us and help you on retaining some more parking as well. Okay, so with that in mind, I would entertain right now a motion to reconsider waiver number six. And that we would amend that. So we need somebody from the prevailing side here, which was a no vote, which was prevailed on granting to a motion to reconsider and a second from that side. And then we'll bring it back up and let's, let's reconsider this waiver request number six and maybe would entertain a motion to amend the waiver from 12% up to whatever half that would be, you know, keep it right around here now, so. All right, so whoever voted no, we need a motion to reconsider and then a second from.
I'll make a motion that they make the green space 18%.
That would be, that would be great, but we, but parliamentary-wise, we, we've already voted this one down, so we need to reconsider it, bring it back up on the floor, which is permissible in parliamentary procedure. So, Mr. Hardcastle, if you would just make a motion to reconsider, did you vote yes or no?
I voted no.
Okay, voted, if you would make a motion to reconsider number six.
I'll make a motion to reconsider number, waiver number six.
Do we have a second? We need a no vote on that. Second by Ms. String, I need a no vote. Okay, Mr. Hasty. All right, so all in favor, just going to do a voice vote, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It's back up on the floor before you now. And now, Mr. Hardcastle, if you would make a motion to amend waiver number six to what you were just talking about.
I'll make a motion to make the green space 18% on waiver request number six.
Okay, so we're, we're amending waiver request number six instead of 12% to 18%, okay? All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to, we have a second on that amendment? All right. Any more questions? Okay, Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay, so that, with that, we have amended waiver request number six. And so now we come back to the main, main motion here. Ms. Silkwood, would you like to make that again?
Yes, motion to approve with all staff comments and changes to the waivers.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Altizer. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now the preliminary plats, the Leland Irwin property. Mr. Free?
This is just a simple three, three lot plat. I think these lots are a little over two acres. It's located on Cages Bend, Bend Road, north of Shoot Lane. And the, I think the developer has agreed to all of the staff comments except for would like to discuss items, public works comments number one, two, and eight. And I don't know if there is a representative of the developer.
Okay, if you would just introduce yourself and Sarah, if you'll be ready for response?
Yes, I'm Leland Irwin. Thank you for looking at this. My only question was about the, the concrete sidewalk, curb and gutter across the property. There's nothing on either side that tie into, it's kind of six acres out in the middle there. Just curious about that, and send your comments.
Through email, I did resend the comment regarding curb and gutter since it wasn't the four lot threshold. But payment and lieu for sidewalk would be required for this project.
Can you explain that, please?
Because there are three lots involved, it requires either construction of sidewalk or payment and lieu thereof.
Is there any grounds to kind of determine why they would need a sidewalk there? There's, it'd just be sidewalks to the end of my property. Not tied into a city sidewalk or a public area or a neighborhood, it was just kind of dead end to a field.
Well, there's an open space in between you and the Savannah property.
And they have no sidewalk there.
But there will be at some point. We will be connecting that in the future.
I thought that property was deemed untouchable, dead, common space for, in the plat book.
I'm not aware of that, but regardless of that, we still have the requirement, and we collect payment and lieu for locations where we do not.
Okay, I'll agree to the sidewalks, that's fine.
Okay.
You're agreeing to do the sidewalk?
Sure.
To do the sidewalks?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's good. All right, so need a motion to accept with all staff comments.
Motion to accept with all staff comments.
Second.
Accepted by Mr. Altizer. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Longmire?
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Stringfellow?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Now we go to Oak Creek Estates. And commissioners, once again, I want to say how thankful I am for you and for hanging with us tonight. It's been some nuance here we've had to deal with. But, and I'm, I'm thinking that this one's going to be one too. Oak Creek Estate. Mr. Free?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This is a little different. This is, this is totally different than anything that we've had before you before. What this is, is Oak Creek Estates. This is located in that area on Stop 30 Road, where Jones Road comes down through. This is a 51-lot subdivision. And the unique thing about this is it's located in our planning region, and we're going to talk about our planning region here a little bit later in the meeting. But we, we still have a planning region, but the county has taken back all control of zoning. So we have no control on the zoning, but technically, we do on the subdivision regulations. So technically, this has to come before you, before you all. It's been to the, the Sumner County Planning Commission for just review, but no action. But we've been working with the, the developer, and we've been working closely with the Sumner County Planning Staff and their engineers to make sure that the things that have to meet county requirements for zoning, that those things are on here. The developers agreed to all of the comments. But this is, it's a really, it's a really odd, weird situation that's been created with, with us having a planning region that we have no zoning authority in anymore. But we have this, the sub, and then all the roads that are on here, there are no city roads that are on here. These are can, this, this portion of Stop 30 Road is actually located, I believe, within the county, and that none of these roads will be city roads that are within this particular development. One thing I might, I might just mention is, did you, let me see, is there another image up there of? Yeah, right there. So one of the things on our long-term transportation plan, you can see down there in the bottom right where it's green and white, is, no, I'm sorry, purple and white. Within that area is where that Wishbone is, is where that, the connection, a meandering connection occur eventually over to Saundersville Road. And so we wanted to make sure that this development could potentially have that meandering connection to Saundersville Road, and we worked, worked out what that is. What this is, is in the county, some things have changed where it's going to impact residential development in the county, where the, this type, this zoning, which is comparable to our ER, where if you didn't have sewer, you could have lots that were just a little bit less than an acre. But if you have sewer now, you can, you can actually do half that. So you can do lots that are a little bit less than a half an acre. And then actually, you could actually do, you could do something called cluster development. This is not what this is, but, you know, however many number you could have, if you had sewer or not, that many lots, as long as you or not, that many lots, as long as you had a certain percentage of open space, you could go to their, the county BZA and get approval for a cluster development, which is similar to, sort of similar to our plan development. And I think years ago, we had cluster developments here. So that's a, it's kind of a new, I think, different dynamic that you're going to see a lot of this happening in the county, especially where sewer is, is actually available. So I can answer any questions. I think we have several representatives of the development here and the engineers for the development that can answer any questions, but they have agreed to all of the comments and everything, everything looks, looks fine from the staff, staff standpoint.
I guess my question would be just simply, where are we pulling the sewer from on this particular development? And Mr. Harrison's coming up, so.
Jim Harrison, CSDG. The sewer actually comes through the Saunders property on the west side of Saundersville, I mean, Stop 30 Road. And there's an easement that was obtained for that, and so that's where we have, we have discussed this with Hendersonville Utility District and they're in agreement with that approach.
Okay, all right. All right, that's all I need to know. That answered the question. All right, we're, need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second by Ms. Stringfellow. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
No.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, that's eight and one, it passes.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on. If you'll indulge me, we won't read all these staff level projects approved and pending. Commissioners can do that. Move on to other. We have a resolution serving as a recommendation to the Hendersonville Board of Mayor and Alderman for the deactivation of the regional planning authority of the Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission and the dissolution of the Hendersonville Planning Region. Mr. Free, would you like to address that?
Yes, and I think there's an image maybe that goes with that one. Yeah. The, the image that you can see, that light blue, that's actually our urban growth boundary and we're going to discuss that here in just a minute after this one, but that purple area is the area that's within our planning region. That's that area that the county is taking zoning authority back. And what this resolution is to move forward so that BOMA can move forward and we can move forward with the state to dissolve our regional planning, our planning region for Hendersonville. And that's in that area that you can kind of see that's purple. There isn't a whole lot of the area that's, that's left. Since the county took zoning authority back, all the cities have started, have either completed the process to remove themselves from the planning region to get rid of this conflict and kind of confusion that's, that's, that's starting to occur. And every, I think it's just us and maybe one other place that's just now starting the process to, to dissolve the planning region. So shortly, there won't be any other, any of the cities that have planning regions in Sumner County that will, that will have that. The whole thing about the planning region, it was set up back when cities could aggressively annex, and I think we talked about the annexation earlier off of, I think Caldwell, where we talked about with that gas station. And so cities had a lot of ability to annex and everything, but that changed several years ago. But what didn't change is urban growth boundaries and, and planning regions and the idea was planning regions, hey, eventually, we're going to annex that. And then, you know, the reality is, is that within these planning regions is that we're not, you know, we're not annexing those areas after they're, after they're developed. I mean, the only opportunity is if a development comes in and annexes and rezones at the same time, then we might get that, but a development isn't necessarily going to occur and we're going to annex that. And so that's kind of how, why the planning region itself was, was created. And so this resolution is just something that can go to BOMA and then I'll take it to BOMA and then if it's approved at BOMA, then it goes to the state. ALJAPAC, I can't remember what that stands for. What does that grant? ALJAPAC?
Local, local government advisory.
Committee or something?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I can't, I forgot too.
So they have to, they have to, they have to approve it. They meet, I think, January the 26th. So we're looking to move this forward through BOMA and get this resolved to have this removed. This will, this will impact, you know, we currently, it'll impact a couple of things. You know, we have Mr. Hardcastle, that's the representative on our regional planning commission. You know, that, that position, once this eventually would be done, if it'd be done, then that position, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that representation. Then, then at some point shortly after there, we'd need to probably redo our bylaws and get that changed and look at, you know, how we want to do, if we want to have nine members or we want to, you know, have 10, and then, you know, kind of relook at our bylaws and change the title and everything once that, once that was done. And I can, I can answer any questions that anybody would, would have for that.
Are there any commissioners that have any questions about the resolution? Ms. Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I don't really have a question, just a comment, but you know, although I don't necessarily like the changes that it, the change, the changes that are going to impact this commission and our urban growth boundary and planning region, I do like that the state law changed so cities can no longer go in and aggressively annex areas where those property owners didn't necessarily want to be annexed and they weren't asked to be annexed. So I grew up in Memphis and there was a situation where a mall, a mall was built in, in the county and the city of Memphis came in and aggressively annexed that mall for the sales tax revenue and seriously impacted the community by doing so. So overall, I don't like what's being done here and how it impacts us, but I do like the state law change. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Silkwood. Mr. Coker?
I just got a couple of questions. One, is there any, if we did not approve this, were there, is there any downside to that? And two, I guess I'll ask along with that, how much of staff's time will be spent dealing with something where we have limited or no authority then if we did not approve this resolution?
That's a, that's a good question. Actually, as you can see by the caseload of what we have today and just, I was going to share this a little bit later in my staff comments, but you know, last year was very busy. This year looks to equal that, but the difference is, you know, looking at the complexity, so the number of things that go to the planet, go to BOMA and have to have public hearings and everything. In 2020, those were about 10, and so far this year, they're 26. So the complexity of what the staff has been dealing with and looks to continue to probably is going to go, continue, there's a big burden on the staff for doing this, really for no, there's no benefit. Like for example, I mean, this was fairly simple, 51 lot subdivision. I would say, because I'm the one that did it, because we've got so much going on, I did this one. I'd say probably between all the, and it's all the communication that I've got to have with the planning staff and then the developer has to talk to us and then they have to also talk to, to the county and it can get confusing too. But I would say I easily have five or six hours in it. And so, you know, and, and it's for, and it's really for nothing. I guess really, and we kind of talked about this before, at the end of the day, you could, you could kind of keep it and could you give some property owners a hard time when they were maybe trying to do something, but really ultimately, you're not going to keep, keep something from happening. You know, just like for example, the, the Oak Creek that we had before us, I mean, you know, really, if they meet all the requirements, you may not be crazy about that development and I think it could be argued, some of the developments, probably two or three of the other things over the last several years that were proposed on that site are far superior as far as community benefit to this. But, you know, but, but this is what ends it, but there's nothing we can really do to deny it. We, you know, and if we do, it would really, you know, if we denied that, for example, I mean, on what basis it meets all the requirements? So, you know, there really wouldn't be a good basis for doing that. So I think it just puts us in a situation where it's not worth the staff time or even the planning commission's time to deal with, you know, some of these things, just to really create this awkward, complex process that really has no, it has no real, real good, real good, real good ending to it. And, and I would say too, that definitely the, the professional, the professional ability and the focus of the county planning is, is definitely, you know, grown over the last several years and with the leadership of Josh Suddeth as the planning, the planning director or the, he's got a different title, but, but he's doing a great job and they're very focused on the things they're looking at and, and come closer to the things that we would have in the city anyway, if it was developed in the city. Does that kind of answer that?
Yeah, I appreciate that very much because where my thought process has gone is I, for instance, the one that we just dealt with, I would have known idea that that was, that was coming up if it did not come up here and potentially that could impact other decisions we make in the future.
Right.
If you'd spent 15 minutes dealing with that?
Yeah.
I think it'd be worth it to keep it, the fact you spent six hours.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coker.
Thank you.
There's no other, commissioners have lights on, so do I have a motion to approve this resolution 2021-09?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Coker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay, now we go to Resolution 2020-10. Mr. Free.
This one, this one's a little bit simpler. We've been working with the county planners and the county, the countywide planners of all the cities and the county and with the elected, the elected, the mayors and judges in all the different locations. Looking at our urban growth boundary, as you can see the map here of the current planned urban growth boundary, we've been working to kind of readjust this urban growth boundary. Really with the changes in annexation law, all the urban growth boundary is about is basically, hey, that's for Hendersonville to annex, you know, Goodlettsville or, or Gallatin, for example, you can't annex that because it's in our urban growth boundary. So it kind of defines the area if we were to annex, where that, where that would be. But really, it doesn't have a, it doesn't have a huge, it doesn't have a real huge impact, but we've worked to clean up and then this is the proposed urban, the planned, the proposed urban growth boundary area. Just a few of the little changes that impact us is that this is existing along Long Hollow Pike and then go to the next one. So see that area in light blue? That goes all the way to Long Hollow. We were just a little short right there. It didn't really make a lot of sense, so we added that to it. That area above there, that actually is Gallatin. That's where the Liberty School complex is, and so that's an area that's a future area of theirs. This is the current planned growth area within this area. Go to the next one. Yeah. And so what that is, is that's an area that we used to have and we've given that over to Goodlettsville for them to be their urban growth boundary. That was an area way far out that we didn't, we didn't really need. And then also this area right here, this is on Avondale, you know, we did that 1200 Avondale? That's like right at the tip of that blue area inside the belt line. We go to the next one. And so what's going to happen there is that blue area right across through there, that that's going to be, Gallatin's giving that up so that it's our urban growth boundary. It doesn't mean we're going to annex it, but it just, just cleans that up and we'll go to the next one. This is one, you know, the whole thing of if you had ever driven on Big Station Camp Road and just that horrible condition that it was, that was all about jurisdictional issues and we deannexed area over there and, and the striped, kind of red and white stripe. And so that is going to Goodlettsville, so we're, we've given that, given that up. I think, is there another one? I think that's it. So those are the, those are the areas and those are just some of the highlights. Doesn't really make a big deal, but it's good to clean this up so there's no future arguments in the future between cities on, on all of this stuff. And we have a process that if there's a conflict in the future about where a boundary is, then we have a process to resolve that as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Free.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2021, 2022 rather, -10?
I'll move to approve 2021-10.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay. Those resolutions are done. Keith, any final comments before we adjourn tonight?
Yes, I do have, I do have a few things that I, that I need to, I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a request from the Director. Would you please, and I don't know if you have planned to speak on this, but for everyone in the entire city, would you please update everyone on, on Martin's barbecue?
Yes.
Please.
I think we can do that.
I get called daily and I would appreciate an update. Thank you.
Okay. And Timothy, tell me if I'm off on it, but as far as we know, it's, it's continuing. They have expanded, they're going to expand the building a little bit more than they had, than they were previously, so that's what the holdup has been a little bit. And so I think they're, did they receive their approvals from us? No, they're still in that process.
Yeah, they've still got to get, they've still got to get recent mills to us addressing some staff comments that came about as a, as a result of their little bit of expansion on the, on the west side of their building that pushed the parking, the drive aisle and kind of redid some parking stuff. So it had a ripple effect that they're still trying to sort out.
But it's coming, so it's, it's going to be, it's going to be, very good question, by the way. I get that.
Mr. Peterson, does that help you at all?
Absolutely. Thank you.
It's coming, it's coming.
It's coming. There's a lot of stuff coming, but that one's, that one's coming. I just want to share several different things. First thing I want to do is I want to introduce JP Finnegan. He's our new GIS technician and so he's been with us now for about three months. I tell you what, what a, what a great addition. He's doing all of our mapping and just takes, takes what we're doing to a whole nother level and we're going to integrate a lot more mapping. It's going to let us do a lot more things with, with planning and using, using mapping. But we appreciate him and he was invaluable in the redistricting process that helped the redistricting committee and helped BOMA through that process. So great, great work. Appreciate it, JP. We, we're not going to have a work session in January. We've just got too many, too many other things going on. We're going to move that and we're going to, we'll get information to you, but February the 15th, we're definitely going to have a work session. We're going to probably talk, focus on subdivisions, changes to the subdivision regulations, but also maybe a few other things. We're going to, we're going to do that. And more than likely, we'll, we'll probably have a work session probably in April, but we'll get you more information about that. Also, you, and then next, the next meeting in January, that'll be when we'll be doing So we'll, we'll definitely be doing that. We had this handout that everybody got. These, these are all the meeting dates for next year. So that last part where it's just the planning commission meeting date, that's what's important to you. And I will note, we didn't actually, we didn't change any, any, they're all second, they're all first Tuesdays. So we didn't have anything that changed on that. So that's, that's what that's going to be for, for next year. I talked about the heavy volume earlier. That continues, but the staff's doing a great job with that. Most of you have submitted your stuff for your four hours continuing training that's required each year. Some of you still have to finish that up, so get that information to Lauren. If you had any question about that, that link to that train, that four hour training, let us know. We're continuing with the West Main Street redevelopment plan. We're working with our consultants on that. That is really going very well and the public input part of that is going to probably happen sometime after the first of the year. So we'll keep you informed and, and when, when you guys will be involved actively in that process. It's very, process, it's very interesting. The data that we're finding, that they're finding on looking at West Main Street and Old Town is ve, it's very insightful and it's very, very interesting. I'm, I'm very excited about that process. Also, the, the Sumner County Bike Pedestrian Study that we're doing, it's a couple hundred thousand dollar study that we're doing with everybody in the county, that's moving forward really well. We've had a lot of participation in that.